All right, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five budget sessions here at Dorrin Street in Athens Park County. Tonight's the evening when we hear from constitutional and elected officials. And so each of our participants is going to have a twenty-minute slot. They can use that entire twenty minutes and we'll move on to the next one. But if they use a little bit less of that time, there might be a chance for a question or two. So that's the way it's going to roll. And first-time participant in this fine affair is the Tax Commissioner JP LeMay. Sir, good to see you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to request that you consider approving a new initiative that I submitted with my original FY twenty-six budget to combine two part-time positions into one full-time position. The tag office is currently authorized for four part-time positions. And the motor vehicle registered position is very complex, requires a lot of knowledge built up over time. So it's proven difficult to hire and train and retain qualified staff for a twenty-hour-a-week position. That limited schedule really doesn't give enough time for those employees to learn the position or maintain proficiency. They're only in the office that short amount of time. Right now, three of those part-time positions are being filled by two employees working at a combined sixty hours a week. Combining two of those part-time positions into one full-time position with benefits will make it a lot easier for us to properly train and retain quality staff in this very core basis that every taxpayer in the county that has a vehicle comes to business every year. So having those frontline positions deep-felled with people who are properly trained is important for good customer service and just keeping the flow going in a timely fashion. Since I submitted the original operations request in January, I've actually established a new revenue stream that could possibly cover this, that would actually fully offset the additional costs associated. The Tax Commissioner's Office maintains bank accounts for both the property tax and motor vehicle divisions. And those accounts hold our collected funds until they're dispersed out to the various governing bodies, the county, the school board, and the cities. All of the earned interest on those accounts is turned over to ACC GOV on a regular basis, which is required by Georgia law. I am right now in the process of transitioning the tag offices' bank accounts to a new institution, offering us an interest rate of one point seven percent. The current interest rate on those accounts is just point zero five percent. Under the current interest rate, the interest earnings on the motor vehicle accounts would be about a thousand dollars or less this year. With the new interest rate, it's going to be about twenty-five thousand dollars this year. And that is more than enough to cover the additional costs of about fifteen thousand dollars to give benefits to the full-time position. The salary is obviously offset by moving the salary from the part-time positions to full-time. If you do approve this new position, it will really improve our staff stability, reduce our training costs, and enhance the service to the public while remaining budget neutral. I appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
JP, questions from the group?
Sheriff Davenport. Just make sure, so you got two part-time workers working sixty hours a week. You just want to combine it to one part-time, one full-time, and the additional cost would be for the benefits.
Correct. Well, I actually have four part-time position slots. I have two people effectively working three of those positions. If I combine two of those positions into one full-time, I would still have a part-time person working in some capacity. That person's already been with us for about five years now. So she is very well-versed in her role.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure, I think you answered past Patrick Davenport's question. So you're not looking to get rid of a person?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
The benefits is that...
It'd actually be, one of the employees would end up with a full-time position with benefits.
Appreciate you improving your banking, Commissioner. That's great.
It's a part of the fiduciary responsibility to make the most of what we're putting in.
Sheriff Johnson?
Girl, in the beginning, you said that you, the interest earned from the bank account would be turned over per state law to the finance. Is that what you said?
Yes, we pay it out to the county.
So how would it be different in this situation?
So right now, I have, the property tax accounts are held at First American, the tag office accounts are held at Pinnacle Bank. And I was able to negotiate with First American. If we brought that business over to them, they would give us a one point seven percent interest rate. And in fact, I was actually making a little bit less than that on the property tax accounts, and they agreed to increase the property tax accounts as well. So there'll be actually a little bit more earned interest on the property tax accounts as well. The estimated revenue from that this year will be about twenty-five thousand dollars just on the motor vehicle. It'd be a slight increase on the property tax interest earned. Before we made this change, it was going to be about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars this year, it would be slightly more than that now with the increased interest. The new interest that we did not have before will be coming from the motor vehicle accounts moving for First American with a higher interest rate.
The revenue would be received in normally in the general fund? Or what you're saying is the additional revenue received in would go towards the additional position?
Yes, that's what I'm proposing. And then there would be, the amount of money needed to cover the benefits for this position would be less than the amount of the additional revenue.
Thank you for quing.
Thank you.
And you have covered the waterfront. Okay. I appreciate it, JP. Thanks a ton.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, next up, we have Sheriff Williams.
Evening, y'all. Good to see you.
Evening. Pardon myself just a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready? All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and start. So I had a presentation, and as I often do, I brought my handy Bible with me. Hope that God would show me down the right path of what exactly I need to say and get across here. So I'm gonna kind of go from the heart instead. We'll start off by pointing out a few things. I think a few of y'all may have gotten this. We have a reentry program at the jail. If you haven't gotten one of these books, I would gladly show you this because I think there's some confusion about what we do and do not have access. Our reentry program lines up people who are incarcerated with services that they need inside the jail. And then once they are released, whether it's addiction recovery, alcohol recovery, drug abuse, mental health services, homelessness, job services, job skills. That's what this program does. And this is a booklet. I can print one for each and every one of you that wants one. So you kind of see more about what Sheriff's Office does that doesn't necessarily get talked about in the same fashion. So let me kind of start. This will be like a free, I guess, interactive session. And then after that, I'll talk a little bit, and then hopefully we'll have some time for some questions and answers after. So I want to start this, like, seriously. It may not come across the way it's intended for all of you, but I'm gonna do it anyway. By showing hands, I just want to know which of you have been charged with, in a position where you ran security at a courthouse or were charged with operating and running a jail? My hand goes up. Okay. Like we say in the meetings, seeing none, I'll move forward to the next one. So I'll say this. You all absolutely have a right to feel a certain way and always can ask questions. I welcome questions. What you also absolutely should do is actually listen to the one person in any setting who is qualified and experienced to make these decisions. Be it courthouse, jail, warrant service, evictions, two elections, two general elections. Right around fifty thousand people had voted and said that I was the person that they want to leave the Clark County Sheriff's Office. That's not lost on me. I hope it's not lost on any other elected official in this room. We're here because the people decided to put you in this place. As such, I'm disappointed that I feel like when I put forth these efforts to tell you what I need in order to do my job, to keep people safe, to run the day-to-day businesses of the Clark County Sheriff's Office, I feel like y'all don't even read all the work that I put into it. That's gotta stop. So I'm gonna tag this little sermon that I'm doing, the pastor's prologue. So instead of like going by all the numbers and saying, hey, I asked for this, you didn't give me that. I'm gonna ask y'all to just go back through history and look at what I have asked you for. And some things we have got. I'm gonna thank you for those. But even some of those things, we've fallen short of. First of all, I have some priority. I keep getting questions, and I've gotten some questions from some of you elected officials. And I don't like calling people out by name until I absolutely have to. But when it comes down to it, some of these questions you have answers to or you at least have access to. So when it comes to the recent deaths, without being able to speak in specifics about the results of them, because I don't have them, the question was asked me, what are we doing to mitigate the deaths? My answer to that is everything we possibly humanly can. Furthermore, for four years, I have come to you, budget season after budget season, in-session meetings, out-of-session meetings, and I've told you, we are short-staffed, critically short-staffed is the word I used. I reflected on other jails that had people dying, that had conditions of squalor. And I said, if y'all don't help me, that's the situation we're gonna be in. And even today, I'm not saying that any of these two deaths were a direct result of our staffing. But what I'm saying is, if you want to know what we are doing, we are doing everything. And we're asking you to do your part. So when we go down the list, I see all these things. And I've sat back for four years, and before that, I was attending and watching commission meetings. But just in my four years, I've seen the community come together and fight for the firefighters to be unionized. And they came out and they spoke, and y'all voted, and we got that going. Seeing the community come together when the librarian said they weren't paid enough. And a community came together and they spoke out and they fought, and guess what? The librarian's got a raise. Haven't seen the same thing from the Sheriff's Office. But time and time again, I've come to you and I said, the reason I can't get my staffing up is because the pay's not what it should be. You all, well, no, the pay study set what should be the standard of pay for certified peace officers in Athens Clark County. And you all let them decide that my deputies are not the same. And they feel that. So my deputies are short-staffed. And then furthermore, in this game of kick the can down the road that seems to happen a lot. I don't know if y'all read it, if y'all understood, if y'all heard me saying in budgets of past, the courthouse is in disarray. And some of that go because I was told, well, we're about to have a new courthouse. But guess what? Four years in, no new courthouse. We don't even have a spot that we're gonna build it on and the money to build what we talked about building. So pardon my French. I get judges, attorneys, everybody crawling up my ass, asking what I'm gonna do. And I'm asking y'all, what are y'all gonna do? Because it's serious. And maybe I wasn't specific enough. Maybe I didn't give you enough details to have you understand that this is serious. But when I say, hey, we need to improve these security measures, when I say we need cameras, when I say we need to make sure that this building is functional, both the jail and the courthouse, it's serious and it's critical. To the point that now the courthouse is on emergency status. And I have a critically low-staffed jail and a critically low-staffed courthouse. But because the courthouse is an immediate concern, I take people from my critically low-staffed jail and move them to the courthouse to make sure that people can be a little bit more safe. And then magically, we have a couple deaths. And nobody's willing to see how those deaths happened or what the information is behind those deaths. Not saying this is the case, but it could be as simple as somebody had a health condition that they or nobody else knew about, and they dropped dead. It happens every day. This caveat, there is no amount of facts and information and investigation that's gonna take away from the fact that anybody dies is a tragedy to that family, to everybody else. But I assert this. Your sheriff is more than adequately equipped to deal with those situations. We deal with the investigation, we deal with the fallout, and I personally deal with the families. Reach out to the families, ask them what I did for them and with them. Because I'm not gonna bring them up here and parade them around and say, oh, well, look, can you speak up for me? And tell them how nice we treated you and stuff. Because that's not my role. My role is to be responsible to the people that voted me into office. I can tell you this story. I had a person whose child was in my jail. And I can't go on the details because it kind of identifies that person. But we have video of exactly what happened. And the medical staff did everything they could do, my team did everything they could do, this person went to the hospital, the hospital did everything they can. And his father came to me, and he said, I just want to know what happened to my child. So I met with him, just so I could do what anybody in a similar situation. And I offered to show that video. And I cautioned him, I said, well, you know, sometimes you think you want to see something and you don't. He made the decision that he wasn't gonna watch the full video, but he watched as much as he could. And after that video, we talked about his son and his son's history. He cried, I cried, my chief deputy that runs the jail cried. And after that, when we were talking, this is important because of what he said. It's important because of the feeling behind it. He said, Sheriff Williams, I followed your campaign, and I voted for you. And I'm gonna vote for you again. That's why I do what I do. And that's why I come before you, telling you that just maybe, just maybe, I have some information. Some of it that you don't have, some of it I've given you, but maybe you don't understand it. But I just ask, future going, can we talk a little bit more about these things? I'm not just telling you we need these things all willy-nilly. It's not how I do. Yes, we're gonna ask for some things that may be different on the hierarchy level of needs. But at the end of the day, I'm not gonna ask you for something that's just flippant. There's, oh, it'd be nice if we could do this. Oh, this big picture. When I ask you something, I would really appreciate it if you all would strongly consider it and not just put it by the back burner. Now, I understand, we've had our issues, and I can tell you this. I think me and the last manager didn't get along. That is what it is. I'm hopeful that moving forward, we can have a better relationship and work together. So that I don't have a manager that thinks that I have to go to the police chief and tell him and get permission to do things that I want to do with my staff. Read the Constitution, read what it says what a sheriff is. If y'all haven't seen me as a sheriff, y'all about to. I'm gonna be exactly what I'm supposed to be as sheriff. That's not a threat, that's a promise. So in these last few minutes before I open up, because I hope y'all may have a question, or maybe y'all can tell me that y'all gonna do the right thing. Pay is paramount. We have to get this pay to where I can hire people. We're still over forty slots down, and it's been that way this whole time since that pay study changed. It can't continue this way. I'm telling you right now in no uncertain terms, more people are going to die if I can't hire more people. Is that clear? By showing hands. If it's not clear, raise your hand and I'll talk some more. Okay. With that said, I don't want to go too theatrical, but I will somewhat put the curse of Felix under. If you're not a couple fans, this is how that goes. When a great couple movie, book, and series, at one point, Oscar is fed up, Felix is fed up, Oscar puts Felix out. Felix finally decides, okay, I'm leaving. And on the way out the door, as he got all the little bags packed, he says, let it be on your head. And I was like, what is that? Well, this is what I'm gonna tell you. If y'all don't help me get my staffing up, the next person that dies in that jail, let it be on your head. The next time one of your Clark County employees gets assaulted in that jail because of low staffing, let it be on your head. I'm gonna deal with the fallout. My team are wonderful and amazing, and we're gonna make it work because we do more with less. I need y'all to understand, I know what I'm talking about when I ask things. And it doesn't mean that I expect you to just wave a magic wand, but if some things, when I tell you, this is the case, and I can point to other jails that have similar situations, I need y'all to take that seriously. I need y'all to take the situation at the courthouse seriously. When we got rats, we just cleaned another rat out of the cell. We need help. We need your help. Lastly, when it comes to the pay studies, I'm sorry, this is gonna sound like a for-real jab. But the commissioners did not need a pay study to give themselves a raise. And I'm not saying y'all don't deserve it. What I'm saying is, y'all didn't need to do a pay study to do what common sense told you to do. Questions?
Questions for Sheriff Williams?
I'll see you.
First of all, I thank you for your service and your openness. And I feel some kind of way because I wish I didn't know what you were talking about. I wish I could ask somebody, what do you mean, what do you mean? But I know how you have come before us in the past. And now we're, now we're in this position again. But I guess I just want to say that I do, I think that I understand. I hate that I relate to what you're saying. I hate it because, and I'm saying that because I truly believe there are some other folk who still don't understand. So I can't promise nothing, but you can walk away knowing that at least one other person who heard you speak knew what you're talking about. So that's it.
And it's about being heard. So I can also say, it's at this point, and I know you hear some frustration, you hear some emotion in my voice. But that's because I've absolutely felt alone. And I've got folks, you know, I'm in situations, and I don't even get acknowledged as an elected official. Sometimes people speak and everybody else gets acknowledged but me. But I've been in a situation, I had a HR director tell me to stay in my lane. I reached out to the governor, Governor Kemp, who's from Athens, and I said, hey, can you help me with this pay thing? And he said, elections have consequences. So I don't know where else to turn. If my commissioners, who are in the same county with me, won't help me, where do I go for help? I'm sorry. I saw two more. I know, Commissioner Myers, I think you had a question or...
Yeah.
Well, I think...
I know we talked about, what's the cost, the estimated cost for the repairs of the courthouse? It's not in what you requested, right?
So yeah, that's not in this request. That's something, and I've actually been working with the judges, Judge Lot and Laura Welch have been very instrumental. We should have some numbers in that. We have a quote that's coming up to a proposal that should be forthcoming on that.
Is it five hundred thousand dollars, a million, or something?
So it depends on what? So the camera system is probably gonna be, for everything, about one point five to two million for that alone. But everything else, but that includes upgrading entry systems, that includes adding cameras to different courtrooms, the parking debt, all that is in that package.
And then, so we've got, you've got a hundred ninety-five positions approved, but you're down forty?
Yes.
So how long have you been down forty?
We've been down between forty and fifty, really, since that pay study.
So with the budget, a hundred ninety-five, so is there money left over for not filling those positions?
So this is the deal. Two years ago, everybody took the salary savings away. Well, I would argue that that's erroneous, especially for an elected official. But that wasn't, I wasn't going after that in this form. But no, we haven't been allowed, and that's why each of the last two years, we've had to come to you all for additional money at the end of the year. Because we didn't have that, about two million dollars in salary saves.
Just to give perspective on this, we've both been with the county for some time. You can go back and check this. A handful of years ago, the police department gave back the salaries for ten positions that they were not going to fill in an effort to help the county. The chief at the time said, we're not gonna fill these positions. And I've heard from several people that involved in the budgetary process that money is not the issue with manpower issue. But magically, when the police department gets a significant amount of rate, gets a significant raise, they don't have that money left anymore. They don't have those positions left anymore because all of them are filled because of a significant rate. There hasn't been any other substantial change at the police department in all of those years. And I worked at the police department, it was not fully staffed. But magically, when they get a significant raise, it is fully staffed and has been fully staffed since that time. So just to give what actual, the bottom line that money does, it fills positions and keeps people there.
The three point five that you're asking for, that's assuming full staff of a hundred ninety-five, is that right?
Are you looking at the capital project budget or...
I mean, the increase of, looking at the increase of a total of three point five, right?
Yes.
Is that assuming a hundred percent positions full, all one ninety-five percent?
That's a piece of it. To get to that hundred, that would be only an increase of a little over six hundred thousand dollars to give us that pay period. So of that three million, only three hundred thousand of that, I mean, six hundred thousand of that would be for the salaries and for sworn officers' compensation. While at this point, in contrast, we're spending about two million at least each year just on overtime.
But that's assuming you have a hundred ninety-five people, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So...
I'm sorry.
He was budgeting for a hundred ninety-five, he's at a hundred and fifty-five. Where's that money? Is it good, fun balance?
So it's general fund expense. You know, at one point, we allocated overtime by department. Now we have a larger overtime pool. Am I saying that correctly?
Little bit of this, little bit of that. There is departmental overtime, including with the sheriff. And then there's a full drive from raises that supplements overtime to account for how much raises would have been or are.
You have overtime by items in your budget?
But we have three over... But we have three overtime line items, so yeah. So we have the court, we have the field, and we have the jail.
Good day, Joe.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for your service.
First, Sheriff, thank you and thank you for, um, speaking so hard. I heard you. I'm just looking at these papers that we're distributing and, you know, you have to, I'd have to, you know, apologize. But, you know, we just see, we see tons of requests from tons of departments all the time. Um, and so in a very, my very simple question is I see one page that says there was a shortage of one hundred thousand, it's hundred seven point fifty-six. But I can't, I need help understanding what line items. Is it in here somewhere that I'm missing?
It should be, and, and if it's not, we can clarify that. But, but for instance, I'll say, uh, you all did a great job. You helped us with medical contracts, so we got a great medical contract. But the amount the contract came in for is not what we actually funded for. So we asked for another one point three five just to cover the additional medical costs that we haven't. And what's recommended in the budget is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Can you give us, I mean, that's what I need.
Yeah.
So I know what the numbers are, is what you're talking about, the shortfall, so what's in your budget? What in your best?
It's on C one one nine.
C one one?
Some of that should be in there.
One one one, oh, in there, in there, I thought, but I thought it was in here.
It's, that's extrapolating.
This is short, this is a good note.
Exactly, I'm sorry.
It's like bingo, C one one.
Exactly.
I was, I was, I had my budget booked down so I could focus on you.
Yeah.
Um, there, C one one.
And I, I absolutely appreciate your attention, so no, no problem, no harm there.
So, um, Sheriff, one thing that we had our first budget being one thing that I, you know, which is to my colleagues that we want to, uh, make sure that we look at trying to sell, we'll definitely start salary at the same time ACCPD. So, um, make sure that we can, at least we start salaries. With ACCPD and Sheriff Department. I think we, um, it's the right thing to do, that's the right thing to do, from my opinion, so. Um, one thing we really look at, is budget.
If, if that works, that'll be a big hit.
Oh, okay. Some of our pages, although, well, the study is going to be completed.
It will be completed, but what the recommendation is gonna be?
I was gonna ask if we cannot, if they don't need this, like you said, I, I agree, he's been asked every year.
My recommendation is gonna be, you know, once we start looking over things, that we go in and fund starting salaries for the Sheriff Department. And that's something that we'll take up considerable.
And to be clear, that's the equity adjustment for sworn officers' compensation at?
And if I can remember what's left from last year, that we put that money aside, but we did not move forward. So again, we'll take a look.
Thank you, Commissioner Davenport.
Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you, um, um, thank you, Sheriff, for the presentation. Um, you have a bias for our police department. Um, I think they are.
Because a lot of people have a bias for the police department, but I also argue that the Constitution says you have to have a sheriff's office. And so both, gotta fund the sheriff.
Sheriff, I agree with that. Um, I do thank you for, um, service. But I do have a lot of family who work in the Sheriff Department and not just pay us the issue. But I do have a question about the medical services in the jail. You're asked, uh, one seventy-seven is recommended and one point three five, which is requested, you know, it's fine. Um, we voted on the new medical contract about two years ago. And, um, I thought that was on the cap because the medical services in the jail as well as how much money are we still paying, keep in mind, at the reason for sending inmates to the hospital as well?
That we negotiate the Medicaid rate, uh, for those instances. But as far as our contract, what I'm saying is, yes, y'all did approve a contract, which was for about four point five million. Uh, we've not had either of these years that full four point five million put into our budget. Uh, so we've been about that one point three million short of just paying that contract. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thornton.
Um, I guess.
So how is it paid? Does your account go into the negative?
It goes in the negative, we move things around, and then at the end of the year, we come back and say, hey, we're this short.
And also that cost changes based on our average daily population. If that number exceeds a certain number, that cost goes up.
I'm aware, it's like a per diem for each individual over four hundred, is that correct?
Over a four minute.
So I'm curious, you know, we have some departments that have, like, throughout the year will have a special agenda for a transfer of funds to increase their budget for their expenditure needs on over. Why is, we've not done that or, or has that been done?
We've done that before.
For the sheriff's office?
So towards the end of the year, is when, is been told it, it needs to be done.
Yeah, that's, that's, towards the end of the year is, is, that's right. But like, we've seen departments come, why have drew, you know, at six months, HR, like for safety and risk, they're, they're at least two times a year over budget. I mean, last year they'll come for, not that's, for me, but for, for approval to increase the expenditure lineup. It's all just curious why it hasn't.
So, so this is what I can tell you, Commissioner, and, and right now, uh, we did get approved for a position for basically a, a management analyst. That's our person that works with our budget, right? She's in the back of the room, Mr. Denise Barnes, and she's been working with us. And it's really our staff, uh, just working hand in hand with finance. That's the only reason that we're not in the negative more often during the year. And we've managed to make ends meet up until that last month or two. Right now, uh, we got two months left and we're about at ninety-three percent of our budget.
Commissioner Taylor, did you hear that?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Sheriff Williams, I appreciate all, um, of the hard work that you do because I know how hard it is being from the east side and representing the east side. I know you have a lot of my constituents in, like, if you're family. And so, and I say that to say, that's why it's so important that we do, um, give you the amount that you asked for. Um, because one of the, one of the inmates that passed away, um, we grew up together. Um, and the last thing, if, if you're gonna have a county, you have to fund the jail, period. We, we fund a lot of things, um, that we want, uh, but the jail is what we need, um, whether we want it or not. We need it. Um, and so, um, I will be working with my colleagues. I will say that I'm new, but I think I'm three years in. But I say that to say, um, I hear your requests and I'll work them.
Thank you.
Um, I, I maybe, and I know I have forgotten, um, the pay study, what was the cost of the pay study?
It's about twenty thousand dollars. It came in under what was proposed.
Well, I think, if I can remember, we're looking at starting salaries, what, starting pays out.
I think they're looking at all their.
Any other questions from the Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the forecast, you know, your number of inmates processed and that kind of thing. What do you base that on? That you're forecasting adding, you know, any other five hundred or so the coming year? Can you kind of tell me the method?
So we, we look at trends, uh, we look at trends from other counties and here. And also the, the big thing is where we're at during that point of the year. Uh, typically during the holidays, when it's cold, the numbers go up. And when schools gets out, the numbers go up, uh, and, and the percentage of, of population that we're dealing with, uh, that all affects it. When we're going through mental health issues, uh, as the homeless population goes up, unfortunately, the jail goes up. So all those things coupled with, uh, DBBHD advantage, whenever they're not able, unfortunately, uh, to provide beds for people, a lot of times what happens is those people end up in the jail. Uh, so all those things collectively is how we extrapolate what those numbers might be.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I apologize, can we put everybody on twenty minutes?
No, I got it, I got it, I appreciate it. You know, we got everything out and I just want to end by saying, hey, we all in this county, we work together, and I want to make sure I leave by letting you know I love each and every one of you. I respect the job that you have, and I hope that we can truly work together, 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 moving forward.
Thank you.
You might want to leave that Bible for the next.
Uh, Superior Court Judge, uh, Haggard and Board of New Straight Lord Welch.
I got pulled too.
Well, you don't need to, I didn't know.
Laura asked if she needed to come up here and I said, oh, I'm Patrick Haggard, I, uh, am not the Chief Judge Lisa Watt. Um, I will tell you that, uh, Judge Lot had an opportunity to go to Ireland with her parents. And I couldn't, I'm all of that, I hope. But, uh, she tried to prepare me and Laura has tried to prepare me, and I'm glad to, glad to talk with you all. So thank you for giving us this time. Um, first of all, I would like to begin by expressing my appreciation for the budget approval and recommendations that we have so far. Total amount of five million, one hundred thousand. Um, I do want to point out a few things. The Treatment Services Division is being, uh, uh, assembled and put the accountability courts, treatment services, um, the state superior, juvenile courts, all under one umbrella that we think will work better. And that's just a, a line transfer, a line item transfer to make cost of the money. Thought is it will be more efficient, um, that way. Um, Superior Court will be able to continue to operate within its budget. And typically, we're able to turn some funds to the general fund and we always look for opportunities to do that. Um, some of our, uh, requests for, uh, F twenty-six, however, were not granted, but we, uh, we still intend to work within the budgets that, uh, that we have and still maintain those, those levels. Um, I will have to mention about my Veterans Court Treatment Coordinator. And of course, the mayor and some of the commissioners are perhaps wary of hearing about this. But I started Veterans Court in two thousand fourteen. We were grant funded then by the state. We have continued to be grant funded by the state every year. Uh, we just got word yesterday that they, uh, were approving our grant for this year, which is a good thing. But I always mention that because I'm afraid one of these years they're going to cut us off. And I don't want to come to you all and have you look at me and say, why didn't you tell us about this? But, uh, uh, that pays for our coordinator, some of our services, drug testing and things like that. But, uh, the state's given us a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars this year, so, um, we're appreciative of that. And I certainly understand you all's position that if we can take advantage of that money, we don't have to come to you. But, um, I may have to one of these days, but as to items that, uh, other items that were not, um, uh, funded, um, our court reporter situation is, um, is untenable as it is. We pay, they're contract employees, right now they're paid two hundred and fifty-five dollars per day, a per diem as a contract employee. That is significantly less than they are paid throughout the state and other areas. Uh, typically, we're seeing, uh, three and a quarter to three fifty per day. And what is happening is as reporters retire, new ones coming in, they're gonna go where the money is. And you can't really blame them for that. And we're actually having court reporters that may not have any real need to stay here, making the decision to leave. So that is impacting us, it's impacting state courts and some of the other courts. We don't have a choice about where a court of record is, the state court is. So we're required to make that record. And I, some people might think, well, can't stay an age, can it just be recorded, so to speak? And it doesn't work like that. Uh, it has to be, it has to be the ability to transcribe. State law requires that they be, uh, the certified court reporter. So they have to have these standards and they're just getting more money. So that's, um, a shortfall for us. We project about ninety-seven thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. Uh, I will tell you that I believe that we can still cover that in other ways in our budget. So I'm not necessarily, I'm asking for money, but I will tell you that state court doesn't have that same flexibility. And they're gonna be up here in a minute, Judge Osland is here and I'll let him talk about that. But we support their request for, if they're gonna be forty thousand dollars short. And I think that is certainly warranted. So it's just one of those things that's what we need in order to do our job and to be a functioning court. Um, under the probation services item, um, we had asked for two vehicles for, um, supervision operations. We've had a situation where, um, foreign probation officers are having to use their own private vehicle in order to do their job. And actually, I think exactly one that was involved in a break in the last, uh, month or so. But, uh, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars if that was, uh, not approved and we're asking that that be reconsidered. Along with, uh, full-time lab tech, because a big part of what probation does, certainly for the accountability courts as well as other people that we have put on probation, sometimes it's, um, uh, pre-trial situations, uh, drug testing is part of it. And we've been fortunate to have this drug lab here in-house and they're very responsive. It costs money to run that drug lab and they, we've asked for seven, another seventy-five thousand dollars there. Electronic monitoring, it goes along those same lines. Um, some situations, we, uh, we are willing to let somebody, um, uh, be out of, out of jail, but they need close monitoring and the electronic monitor costs money. Um, sometimes they're able to pay it, but we don't want that to get in the way of them being out and perhaps being seductive, but while all the citizens being, being safe. So that, uh, is another twenty thousand dollar request. And then a five thousand dollars request for anticipated, uh, overtime for additional funds. I don't have that total, but I'm sure we can. I do want to touch on, um, House Bill eighty-five that, um, is our, um, reallocation of pay for Superior Court judges that you, some of you may have heard about. Um, it, uh, is important because what it does is actually shift some of the county responsibility that you all have taken on over to the state, which I suggest to you is a good thing. Um, so, um, our supplements, they're not gonna call them supplements, they call them locality pay. Are going to be, there will be a maximum amount of ten percent there, which is significantly less than what the county is paying us now. But the state is gonna make that up. But we are asking for that ten percent locality pay. In addition to that, um, for as long as I've been around, and I guess as long as it's been Superior Court, the, the Chief Judge in this circuit has never received any extra money. Um, there, most other circuits, um, do have an additional fund for the Chief Judge. And I, I will tell you that I have watched Judge Lot over the last year or two and everything that's been going on and how many hours that she has spent in this, I'll, I'll say elevator issue, uh, that's just one. But it just, there's a lot of administrative duties that follow the Chief Judge. I'm here. I'm here to ask that that, that there be a stipend for that in the amount of two and a half percent going forward. That will be new, but I hear again, I think that can also be dealt with in our current proposed budget. But I, I think that's important. So as far as House Bill 85 is concerned, I mean, I could spend a lot of time getting in the weeds on that. It doesn't really kick in. It was just signed yesterday. It doesn't kick in until January of 26. So there really won't be any change until then. We'll be in close contact about exactly what the, I mean, we know what the number is that the state is going to, going to pay Superior Court now is what I'm talking about. And we'll, that leaves us, but asking for any adjustments in this, in this year's budget. But it's sort of like the Veterans Court said, but I just don't want you all to be surprised when you start talking about it. But I don't expect us to come back mid, mid-year and ask for any. Well, I think it's something that, that we will be talking to y'all about adjusting and then planning for the future there going forward. Also, you know, I have to take this time to thank Laura Welch, who's sitting beside and, and Lisa Lott, who have just spent hours and hours trying to wrap their mind around and make this, this obstacle of the elevators work. Because we, it's not just a matter of us being lazy and not being able to walk upstairs. I mean, we can't service the public. We can't have jurors. I met a grand jury that, a grand juror that was on the fifth floor, walking down the stairs with her walker one day. Just scared me to death. And I talked to her about, she said, it's my duty. I just, I'll make it happen and not. So I say that because everybody in the courthouse has made it happen. The employees in this county that work in the courthouse that aren't even necessarily in judges' offices have been wonderful. They're not whining. They're not complaining. They're exacting. And there's light at the end of the tunnel. We're hearing positive things that we may have an elevator. I won't say it out loud in the next two weeks or so. But that will, it's just been a real problem. And of course, it also has impacted you all and your, what you all have been able to do. We've, we've intruded on the city hall and there's been expenses related to the Classic Center and all of that. And I appreciate all of y'all's willingness to do that. I, I can only smile when I think of our, our interim manager, what he walked into. He probably would not smile.
I don't smile.
But he has also been very interested and very, very much proactive in trying to get something done. And I appreciate that to those. And Andrew Saunders as well. Thank you very much. But that is what I have to say. I'll be glad to try to take questions if there are any.
I just wanted to check because of course HB 85 asked through the wake of the initial submission. Do we have a sense of a net impact in that, whether it's for the half fiscal year beginning January 1st? Or is that yet to be determined?
It will have an impact. It will start, so it becomes more complicated because the judges that are currently employed have to opt in. I don't think, I, I expect that, I know I'm opting in. I expect others will opt in. Because without telling you more than you want to know, it also impacts our retirement and all of that. So I expect everybody to opt in, but we won't know that until closer to the time. But once it starts January 1st, and we'll have to let the state know before that, okay, are you opting in? And where does that leave you on your locality pay? And that's the thing. So we'll have to tell them that. Mr., am I calling on people? I'm going to let people ask me questions in the courtroom. But we're not there.
Not there, Pro Tim.
Oh, you do that.
Yeah, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Hamid, you did it?
No, I was going to point to Patrick.
Oh, I see.
All right. I missed your court recorder. They're getting paid 255. What are other people getting paid average?
325 to 350. I think some of the metro Atlanta people are doing even 40. And but this area, 325 to 350.
You're asking for 97 for that.
We, that, we feel like that will be the, the impact on our budget on an annual basis, 97,000.
And this is for the county. We do, sometimes we have surplus and not surplus, older vehicles. We do government whatever.com or we sell those. Can we give those, like retrofit our police vehicle for probation?
We could if we replaced them on our target cycle, but by the time we're done with them, they legit are parts vehicles. But if you wish to support probation, I would recommend you consider adding to the fleet.
Thank you.
I was looking at the Treatment Services, you know, 24, 25, zero then 26. It did, we just started Treatment Services, C139. I'm just curious. I mean, you got, you got FY request, FY 26 request, 326890. From Mayor recommended 3154, so about just one in two years. We didn't have, it was zeroed out. So I didn't know. Just started or?
That's correct. That money, that position was created two fiscal years ago. It has never been filled. So now that we've established the reorganization of Superior Court and, and we have a Treatment Services, we'll have a Treatment Services Division with the adoption of this budget. We're ready to, to fill that position and, and really realize a lot of efficiencies and greater effectiveness with our treatment.
And so we have like drug in-house testing.
In-house drug lab?
So when do, when do, when, when, so when do we use that and not go to GBI? Is there a difference?
Yes, there's a difference. We, evidence that is seized, taken in, goes to the GBI for testing. That's, that's testing evidence, not people. The drug lab here at Athens Clark County tests the use of drugs by probationers or people that are out on 100, things like that.
The items that were not recommended in the mayor's budget, which are priority items for you?
Thank you for that. Let's see. I would say funding what is going to be state court's request for the additional $40,000 would be one. But that's state court. I'm going to leave that to Judge Osmaner. So I think the, the vehicles, the other, and the $75,000 for the drug lab would be priorities. And certainly we would ask for, if not the 97,000 for our court reporters, significant part of that so that it does, we don't impact other things.
You just said vehicles. What was the second thing?
Vehicles and the lab tech and the electronic monitoring. So that's 120, 75 and 20.
I just had one more comment about the Chief Judge supplement. I think that it is required in order to change pay, that that is an act of the mayor commission. And instead, and it would not impact our budget at all, particularly with House Bill 85. There will be savings in the supplement appropriation. And then going forward, those supplements will be phased out. And so if, if our commission did want to designate that 2.5% supplement for the, for the Chief Judge, it would be no impact to our budget, to our current appropriation. And, but we would need that, that. I love the word no impact. Yes, no impact. So family and staff, so when we adopt our FY 26 budget, can we, can we add a clause or phrase to say, you have the Chief Judge, 5% raise since HB 85 is, is going to take care of it?
Either, depending on the kind of legislative language, state law, you know, either we would embed that in the overall budget, commission to find option, or have a separate agenda item.
And we can provide y'all with that.
A few weeks ago, several of us went to the training and we heard from a legal expert, Ken Gerard, that actually is an expert in a council for over 95 counties. And he spoke, the very first thing he opened with is we have an obligation to fund the courthouse and the services that it provides. And so I, I, I hear you loud and clear when it comes to the elevator. Can you talk to us about the, the conditions, the working in the courthouse? And, and the, the splashed project for the, the new courthouse? I mean, whereas I've noticed those meetings have been scheduled and canceled, scheduled and canceled. Can you talk to us about that?
Well, I, I'd be, I'd be glad to try to address it. And I, please understand, I'm coming obviously from my, my perspective. You know what I mean? I think clearly the facilities, the courthouse facility is woefully inadequate in space, in security, general layout. I mean, we, I think experts have looked at it and said, it can't be fixed for a courthouse. I mean, times have changed. It's just not secure. Back of us riding elevator. We get on elevators with witnesses and other people and it, it's, it's not uncomfortable for me. It's really more uncomfortable for them. And they're, they're with jurors too sometimes. I mean, those things are just not done in a new courthouse setting anymore. The, you know, the parking situation can't really be fixed the way it is. I mean, we, we park in the parking deck and we, we come and go, but other people do too, which is fine. But it's, it's a, it's a safety concern. I will have senior judges from other courts that come and spend time with us and they, they're surprised. You know, it's, we, you know, I could go on and on. There's a lot of things. I, I mean, I think there's some, they're trying to address, I don't want to say the word mold. I don't want to alarm anybody, but there's, there's something that I think is going on there that they're working on. And the idea was, Spielas was going to provide an answer, even though in fact we were working off of pre-COVID dollars. And that's not the case. It just went the other way. So I, I get that reality. I mean, I think that no longer can we just wait on another courthouse. I think we're faced with doing as much as we can with that one, with certainly an eye toward the next user. I think there's always going to be a next user of the courthouse, the elevators, for instance. Those are going to be there for that next user in the county. So I don't see that money as being spent just, just for us necessarily. But it's just kind of from A to Z, but the biggest issue is the space. I mean, we are constantly, this gets back to Laura and all shuffling, even without the elevator issue, we constantly shuffle around courtrooms. There's not enough courtrooms for us. And we don't use the courtroom three hours a day, five days a week. But a lot of times we don't know until that morning that that case is resolved, for whatever reason. And that, we ran into that with renting the, the Classic Center, you know? We've got a habit to go. We've got to get jurors to, to be over there. And then low and behold, we don't have a trial. And we hate to see that money wasted too, very much. But that along with the personnel, the security of the personnel is not just the judges. Everybody in the courthouse, including the, the public, period. I mean, you know, I don't know, most of y'all may remember that there was a tragic event where an inmate actually jumped off of the fifth floor of the area, area. He survived, thankfully, but I've actually talked to him in the last two years. About that. But anyway, it was a miracle he lived. But it's that kind of thing that he was right there with the deputy. The deputy couldn't stop him. I know I jumped a rainbow line.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I can't call on you.
How much should the Classic Center's charging y'all to use the space?
Charging you.
Charging us.
Very expensive.
It's very expensive.
And we've been able to avoid use of, of the Classic Center as much as possible. And we've, we've, it's City Hall. Luckily cases have settled that have allowed us to, to be, only need one courtroom, in which case we've made every effort to, to pivot over to City Hall and save that money.
Zero cost.
Zero, that's right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Thank you, Judge Haggard. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Judge. This should be easier to understand than the one I gave you last year, that 18 problems.
Well, thank you very much, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, all the commissioners. Judge Hope and I recognize how difficult your job is. People come up to us every day and say, well, I could never, you know, judge a case. Or if I had somebody before me decide what to sentence, or if I have someone with a mental health disorder. But I look at the 10 and 11 of you who are managing the resources of this county, take it so serious. You have so many great requests that are in front of you and it's a really difficult job. So I do want to say, even though all of the things that have been going on with the courthouse and different things, we feel supported by the 10 of you and 11 of you, especially mayor. This is, I guess, the seventh time we've sat down in this, this setting. I've been here many years and I've always felt that each of you listen and are really interested in what is right for the county and supporting the courts. So thank you. Want to just briefly highlight a couple of things. The case, the case count that we have in Superior Court, and we are on page C132, which on the PDF is page 166. We have just, I put a few numbers in, Judge Hope and I put a few numbers in about our increased case count. And I know we start with COVID year, so I also did a comparison to 2023, just to go back two years. Because 2023 is after we came out of COVID. And you can see that between 2023 and now, you know, criminal cases filed have gone up 16%. Civil cases filed have gone up 38%. What I really want to highlight, and this I think I attribute a lot to Judge Hope. I mean, you guys know, you guys appointed him as the municipal judge for many years before he became a state court judge. He disposes of cases and he's really got us just doing the best we can to dispose of cases. So if you look at our case disposition rates, that is the second line down there. I, between CY 20 and now, it's 60%. But if you go back to 2024, we had 3,742 criminal cases filed. We disposed of 3,771. And the year before, we disposed of 500 more than were filed. I mean, that, that just tells you that we are, cases are coming in the door. We are disposing of them as quickly as possible because as anyone charged with a crime or has a civil matter, they do not want it to last. matter, they do not want it to last. There is some inevitable amount of time that it has to last, but they want it to move as quickly as possible. And I greatly attribute that to him. Just want to touch on, as all of you are treatment courts, both Judge Hope and I are always very active in treatment courts, our DUI court is still again a national model. We'll be hosting a model training later this year. We had one in December and we had our people from all over the nation come in and gave us the feedback that again, yes, we are one of the top courts and one of the top circuits in the entire United States. You should be proud of how we manage people with mental health and substance use disorder. And Judge Hope works with Judge Norris and every week is working with those with those significant mental health disorders and trying to help us keep them out of our jail so that Sheriff Williams doesn't have to manage them. And I just wanted to tell you, there's a lot of good things going on in the courts. I know we're not out here advocating for it every single week. A lot of people maybe that are out there in the media don't talk about the good things going on the courts, but the people that are working there in the different offices really, I think, would make you proud and should make you proud representing our commission. So I want to, I want to just cover three things. And last year I gave you this like five column spreadsheet and I realized I need to make it simple for the commission. So I have a one pager, but what I'm asking is on the top in three columns with, so for finance, I know they love these 85 number accounts that I don't understand, but I wanted to kind of make it simple. I'm going to start with court reporting services and I and I see Judge Haggard, who I, who he and I have offices next to each other, we've worked together for many years. And I don't want to correct Judge Haggard, but I want to maybe maybe amend what Judge Haggard said to to your group. Because I've done the research on not only our surrounding counties, but the counties that our contracting corporations work with. And it is not 325 to 350 per diem. A lot of counties have gone to in-house court reporters, Gwinnett, Hall, other counties, where they're paying them salary and benefits. And if you look at what a per diem is for that, when you include the the large benefit rate, it is much more significant, 325 or 350. And when I look at for the contract reporters in DeKalb, Fulton, and Newton County, and Forsyth County, and Fayette County, Hall County, Dawson County, there is no county that pays their court, contract court reporters less than $400 per diem. And some of those counties, they also get an hourly rate on top of that. So again, I don't mean to say that Judge Haggard wasn't correct. They are getting 300 and 325 per diem, they're actually getting significantly more than that. We actually are asking for only 350, which is lower than what we believe surrounding counties are, because we're going to try to do it in a step process. And we felt the floor's guidance that this was the best way to manage our funds to provide to our court reporters, as he mentioned, they have to have a certain level of training, they have to have a certain level of ethics, they have to go to continuing education each year, they have to be approved by the state, they have a real significant amount of guidelines that they have to follow. Because anytime a person's liberty is put in in interest, we have to have a good record. So if some, a mistake is made, it can be properly appealed. And these are professionals that are working in our courts, they're essential services. Judge Haggard, Judge Hope, myself, the other judges, we can't start the day if our court reporter is not in the chair. Court doesn't go forward. Doesn't matter if we have an elevator, we can't go forward. Doesn't matter if we have air conditioning, can't go forward without a court reporter. I am greatly appreciative of how well the judges work together. Judge Haggard got up here and said, we need 97,000 for Superior Court. We will try to make it work in our budget to make sure state court can have it in their budget. How many departments do you hear come in and say, we're going to go this and try to make it work in our budget so another department can actually meet their statutory requirements? I mean, that, I I really appreciate that, Judge Haggard, because that makes my life easier. And I think that's what you see in our county and our courthouse is departments working together. I do hope you fund their 97,000, but state court does not have, we run a budget that is, when you give us the budget, we run it. This year we're targeted at being minus $7,000, we're that close. I mean, we're razor thin, we're down $7,000 this year. We need the $41,000. Mayor gave us five, I need a total of 46. So I'm asking on this very top line item, $41,000 above what the man, what the mayor recommended for reporting services so we can properly pay our court reporters. This will be something we'll be meeting on every single year and I believe that the commission will see some type of request from Superior State Court and magistrate court every year in the future. It's just, it is just going to be in the nature, they're basically our like blood and we will be evaluating that. The second piece I'm asking for is bailiffs. This is kind of unusual that I'm coming to you and say, why do I need 5,000 more for bailiffs? Well, our bailiffs are paid the minimum county wage, which is very fair. You pay an excellent minimum county wage. Their hours don't change, but their wage changes every year and my part-time line item doesn't increase. So if I don't come and ask for an increase for my bailiffs, I've either got to cut their hours or otherwise. So I am asking for $5,000 to to be prepared to pay the COLA that I know that you will be giving them, just so I can make sure I can maintain my bailiffs. I do actually believe, and I included for you, we submit the green sections to the county. So the county, I mean, my budget documents that I give to the county, I mean, it is probably 20 or 30 pages of documents. I know you get a two-page spreadsheet snapshot. I gave you what I actually submitted to the county as to what my explanations were for each of these. So on the back, the bailiffs, it tells you why I'm asking for the bailiffs and the amount of money. And there's actually, I asked for 20 more hours per bailiff in there too, and actually rounded off exactly to $5,000, which I just thought was so cool. So it's the COLA increase and 20 more hours based on the court we're doing. This last one, I will be honest with all of you, I feel very silly that I'm here asking for you for this. You're like, office supplies. What department director, what elected officials comes before this steamed body and asks for copy paper, asks for postage, asks for printing, asks for, you know, help with substitute judges and travel and training? An elected official whose budget every year is frozen unless I ask for an increase. And so these line items have been frozen for quite a while. We're about $7,000 under this year. I'm asking for $7,200 to basically just increase line items that have increased over the past so many years. And I know that sounds silly and I thought of, I'm sure Laura Welsh might have advised me not to put this in there. Luckily, I called her when she was really busy and I just handed this to her and said, this is what I'm going to go to the commission today. So I'm sorry, Laura, that I'm embarrassing you. But I'm asking for $7,200 for office expenses because it doesn't automatically increase, even though copy paper, copier, um, our travel, we have a new employee, which you gave us a few years ago, staff attorney, I've got to send them to training and so forth. So that's what I'm requesting. The corresponding line items, I've already given it to finance. So if you were so gracious, but we do at least ask that for what you have provided, the mayor's recommendation, please approve the mayor's recommendation. And thank you. I took my time, probably said everything, I'm sorry.
I think just to illustrate the court reporting that we've talked about, um, I'll just give you a story. A local attorney was trying a case in Savannah, big civil case, they're traveling all the way down there. They show up and it turns out that the judge, it was a week long trial, only had a court reporter available for two days, they had to cancel the trial and not have the trial. So we're not the only jurisdiction that is dealing with these court reporter issues, multiple jurisdictions, even a jurisdiction as big as Savannah is struggling with attracting court reporters. Part of it is that the law isn't catching up with the technology. I think we discussed this in another forum previously. Yes, we have AI and we have all this other information. We use WebEx a lot, I get a transcript of every WebEx I have. That transcript is not something that's appropriate statutorily, but the people that would be going to court reporter school know that's on the horizon. So there aren't enough people going to court reporter school to fill all the slots at all these courts. So at some point, the law and the technology are going to have to meet in the middle, but we're not there yet. And that's why we're left with the problem we're left with.
Thank you. And I won't call on anyone, I'll just look at the Air Pro Tim.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe for educational, you all use court reporting, Judge Haggard's office uses court reporting. Why will you combine the two, work together, or from the budget perspective, court reporting?
Great question. And that really is, is because the amount of court that Judge Haggard schedules and the amount of court I schedule, I mean, my court reporter is scheduled five days a week for me and she has no idea how long each day is going to go. And my guess is that Judge Haggard's court reporter is scheduled four or five days a week and she never knows how long it's going to go. And you have to have a dedicated court reporter because we don't, I think it would be, I understand what you're saying, if we had a pool of court reporters, that would be nice, but they would, but I, I would never rule out that we couldn't work together because if Judge Haggard was willing to get up here and ask you to actually approve something in my budget, I'm confident I could work with Judge Haggard to do that. It just, it's just the intricacy of trying to coordinate that.
Just curious.
Great question, very good question. I'm going to like your question.
I did. I just want to say I really liked this.
Well, better than last year. Only thing I forgot is now I realize I should have put three holes in it. Next year, if I come with one, I'll have three holes in it.
I'm not finding it.
Yours has holes in it.
No, mine is. It's official.
That's a wonderful message. But you all vote for.
Oh, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good.
I don't have a handout for you, I'm sorry about that.
Stick to what we got on.
Well, yes, I'm not, I'm not asking for anything that you don't already know about. I'll try to stay on top then.
Thank you.
Yes. Hello, thank you all, I know you've been doing this for a while and I'll try to make sure your eyes don't glaze over because of anything I say. My name is Mandy, Amanda Trumbull, I'm Mandy. And, you know, I'm trying to balance some of the ideas that I hope to be able to talk about today. First, of course, thank you for everything that you've done for us. We've had an increase in juvenile court in one of our positions. Finally, we were able to have a second full-time judicial position and that has revolutionized what we are able to do. Our caseload justified it for a while and that happened, it's not part of really this conversation, that happened in January of this year or went into effect. I also hope to be able to talk about what it would mean for our court and for the families that use our court if the requests that we made, not all of which have been recommended, are not funded, because I think there are some pretty significant consequences that I'd like to make sure you understand. And honestly, would like to know what you would like me to do about it if these funding requests aren't met. I'm not sure that everybody knows exactly what juvenile court does. Maybe you all do, so I'll try not to get in the weeds. But we deal with delinquent cases for juveniles who are under age 17 and are charged with offenses that would be crimes if they were adults. Right now, we're seeing the most serious of those because of our great community. We have a lot of diversion programs that help to process, I'll say, the more, the less serious offenses through diversion programs, through conflict resolution, through informal adjustments. So those cases aren't coming to court in the same way. What we're seeing now are weapons-related cases, we're seeing shooting cases. Almost everything is violent in nature if it's not being diverted. So I think it's important to understand if that's a change in the type of case that we've seen over the last several years. Our other primary area of jurisdiction is dependency. And some people call those DFAS cases, some people call those abuse and neglect cases. Those cases are also increasing in severity. My personal belief as to why that's the case, and this is open for debate, during COVID, many services shut down, right? We know that throughout the country. It's not at all Athens Clark County. As a result, our children didn't receive services, our families didn't receive services. There was a period of time where nothing was being done that would have been as preventive in nature. And so we have these cases in court after a long period of time of not receiving social services. 90-plus percent of the families that utilize our court are indigent. On the delinquency side, so kids charged with crimes, the state covers appointment of counsel, lawyers, court-appointed counsel for those children through the public defender system. That is not the case, dependency cases, right? So our child abuse and neglect, the General Assembly cast that cost on to the counties, to the local governments. We have more complicated cases, we have a more expensive market, and now we have more expensive costs. As long as ARPA funds were available, that was reimbursing the county for some of these increases. ARPA funds are no longer available, but our needs haven't changed. Money's gone, but we need it. And that is really sort of a very short summary of the background for why we're asking for what we're asking for. And to cut to the chase a little bit, if the funds that were not recommended aren't funded, right, we're not given those funds, that is going to be a de facto decrease in the juvenile court budget. I'll have to choose, am I going to reduce my attorney rate, a court-appointed counsel attorney rate? Or go over budget and have to request more funds later? I I don't know. I'm open to suggestions about how we're supposed to meet that need. So another thing I should probably say is we only appoint counsel for it statutorily or constitutionally required. And if if anybody wants a point of reference, the primary amount that I'm speaking at right now or referencing, um, we requested an additional $107,600 for contract attorney costs. So that's what I'm talking about. That money goes to pay attorneys who are appointed, paid for at the current rate of $77 an hour to represent parents, children, and also to serve as a party and ad litem. We chose that, we requested the rate of $77 an hour during COVID because that, at that time, Governor Brian Kemp raised the special assistant attorney general rate, 77, the special assistant attorney general, we call them SAGs, represent DFAS, Division of Family and Children's Services. So we were not going to have local attorneys agree to take our cases if we were paying them less than what the state is paying their attorneys. So at the time that we were requesting ARPA funds, we increased from, I think we were at $50 an hour out of court and 60 in court, that predates me, I'm sorry. We requested an increase that was approved through ARPA and that's where we are right now. If I decrease that amount, I'm not going to have any attorneys working here and I will not be able to meet my statutory and constitutional mandate to provide counsel for all the parties at work. So we need that money. And also, to put it maybe more bluntly than I should, I have to appoint those attorneys regardless of what that line item budget says. I'm required to do that. So it can, it be in the line item and we can be prepared for that or I'll have to ask for additional funds. I'm open to suggestions about how anyone would like to handle. The other item that's a priority for our court that was not recommended for funding is the contract attorney cost that the request was $118,300 for a senior attorney position. And again, a little bit of background, our court does not have any administrative staff that is not part of the clerk of court for juvenile court. So it's different than the elected court. But that staff, the clerk of court for juvenile court, is an employee of the county that has her own statutory obligations that relate to the duties of a clerk of court. All of the administrative staff in juvenile court, other than our family treatment court coordinator, work for that position. They have their own duties that are not administrative to the judges. If there are questions about that, let me know, I don't want to belabor that point. And so the two judges, they're full-time now, have our own requirements to make sure calendaring, not for court, but for meetings, to make sure, you know, emails are answered, messages are returned. We don't have secretaries, we do that on our own. The other thing that we have to do is by law, by statute, every court hearing that we have has to have an order with findings of fact and conclusions of law spelled out. We don't get to do like a one-page order that has, you know, more of a form format. All of that has to be done by the judges if we don't have an administrative position. Again, using ARPA funds, we were able to fund this staff attorney position. Those ARPA funds are gone or going. I'm not sure ever exactly what the status of that is. But our staff attorney was contracted at a rate of $50 an hour. That comes out roundly to, I think, $104,000. If he were made a full-time employee and had benefits and all of that, then we've requested 118 based on the salary guidelines and the position descriptions. We did a map on that, of course, just looking at the raw numbers. It's about $56 now, and so we're not asking for much more. But again, if it's not funded either at a contract rate of what he has now or this increased position, does that mean that the mayor and commission would support me firing him or not renewing his contract? That's a filled position right now. If it's not funded, then that means you don't get to keep the employee. Judges have to handle all of that administrative work. And in order for us to do that, we'll have to bring in visiting judges to handle our court calendar. They make a prerata hourly rate of our salary by statute. And it would also violate the statutory requirement of one judge, one family. So that was a lot of information about a bunch of different things. I hope what it boils down to is that granting our requested amounts is the simplest way to make sure we can actually operate the way that we need to operate. I'm not, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure I got that all right. The additional money you're saying for the contract attorneys, or contracted attorneys at 77 now, you're, you're saying, assuming that you would be spending that, you have to, you'll be spending that anyway even if we don't budget it because we have to.
That's long and short of it. I, I have said.
Okay, so that's it. And the other, the 118 for the senior attorney position, you're saying that's an already filled position? Was that ARPA-funded?
Yes.
Okay, so that's one of those ARPA positions that are, they are the ones that look sitting around with all their funds.
Oh, definitely not.
All right. And then there's 80,000 to transfer to a court coordinator. And was that, was that, were you referring to that?
No, I mean, and it's not, that's okay. No, it's fine. I said a lot of words and I was trying to do it quickly, but yes, we would always like to have that funded. That currently is a grant-funded position through our family treatment court grant. And as Judge Hager had mentioned, we found out today that we were fully funded on that grant. As part of our grant application, we are required to show our sustainability efforts every year. So we have to ask for, so that in the event it's ever not funded, we would be able to let you know. You ask for this every year. It's always been grant-funded even though it's not.
You were just like referring to some administrative stuff, but the, those duties were ones that attorneys are doing. And you're going with it.
Thank you. Correct. Thank you.
Is she all right?
She entered the court. Thank you. Yeah. It's not something that's a priority, it's just.
Make sure I heard this right. You have no administrative support?
Not in the way that is a legal assistant, a secretary, or a judicial assistant. That is correct. Now, that being said, I have to say that our clerks do double and triple duty trying to fill those roles when that's not really their jobs. So the, the individuals in those roles support us in ways that are greater than I could ever tell. But that's not part of the duty.
Any other questions? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right. So good evening to you all. I think I know almost everybody, or maybe everybody around the table. My name is Ben Makin. I'm the chief magistrate court judge. This is Judge Donna Roe Green, who's with me. And seated in the back is Judge Kelly Wagle. If I look sad, it is not because of the mayor's recommended budget. It is because I spent today interviewing candidates to fill Judge Wagle's position because she'll be resigning in July. So thinking about her leaving makes me sad. The mayor's budget actually brings me great happiness. And I look forward, Judge Wagle's been a wonderful person to work with. I do look forward next year to, if not sooner, to introducing one of our next magistrate court judges. Once we have that person, it's like. Judge Osslander and I have worked with the DUI Court for over a decade. And when we talk to the participants every session, we begin by asking them to share their good news. And I want to kind of begin here in the same way, which is to share our good news from magistrate court. And there really is no bad news, but I want to kind of look at the big picture good news. When I was appointed chief magistrate beginning of 2022, I felt like there were three big issues that we needed to address for our court to be successful. First was that we needed a 21st century audiovisual system. The second was we needed our garnishment clerk position to be made full-time because of the complexity and the amount of that work. And the third was that we needed our case management system to reflect the modern era per its previous funding through SPLOS. And so the good news for today is that over these three years, with the support of the commission, all of those things have happened. And all of those things have paid off for our courts in exactly the ways that we would have hoped that would have paid off. The most recent of those three is the implementation of our new case management system, which just went live at the beginning of April, so about a month ago. And that has, actually several of the candidates I interviewed today told me as practicing attorneys, how valuable that system was to them. So that, we are still putting together all of the pieces and bells and whistles there, but it is really going to be a benefit to our clerks, to the judges, and most importantly, the public. So thank you all, going all the way back to 2010 SPLOS, for the support that you've shown for magistrate court. In this year's budget, the, all the items that we requested increases for were court reporting and for the cost of storage of offsite, offsite files. And when we made, when we made that request, we made that request knowing, and y'all have heard the issues about court reporters, that there was going to be an increase coming down the pipeline, and we needed to be ready to address that. We actually got sort of the news that we were expecting from our court reporter, which was an increase in rates. Now, the good news there is that while the mayor's budget did not give us exactly what we requested, after getting that increase and looking at the number of preliminary hearings that we'll have typically over the coming weeks and months, my feeling is that what was recommended by the mayor and manager's budget is actually sufficient to, to cover our needs for the next year. So we kind of made our best guess for what increases we should ask for, kind of looked into our crystal ball. The mayor and the manager had a better crystal ball, and so we're asking you all to adopt the budget as has been proposed rather than the full amount that we requested in our request back in January before we knew exactly what those numbers would look. Not a part of our budget, but I think it is important to, to point out and our, and to acknowledge our appreciation. With that case management system, there is a maintenance cost. That is not under the magistrate court budget, but it is in the information technology budget. And that is what will make the system go, not just go live, but continue to go. And we appreciate that that has been funded. So in general, you know, what I would say about magistrate court is that the, the news is good. I feel like with the support of the commission, we're in a good place to do the management of the court. Echo the things that you all have heard from other courts in terms of the support and camaraderie that you see in the courthouse. Our courtroom in particular has become very valuable real estate since it is on the second floor. And the second floor is ADA accessible because of the ramp to the second floor. So we share space with all the other courts. We all coordinate. We all do all the things that keep things on track and frankly, that we should do. And it's important that you all hear that. Sometimes there's some interest about case trends in magistrate court. Always probably caution you all from reading too much into those numbers because they may not always tell you as much as I think. Our disposessory or eviction cases this year and in 2024 were and are within kind of historical norms. They're higher than the COVID years. They are lower than the years of, you know, 2008, 2009, 2010. Our civil cases this year, for whatever reason, for the first time are outpacing disposessories. Civil cases just being cases where anyone is suing another person for money. And I don't know why that is. That is unusual. So we have seen an uptick in filing there, probably on the high end of historical norms. So that data, for what you all would do with it, is, is data that we track. We have been able to resolve a high number of cases. Some of that is simply making sure that we clear up these old cases that folks have kind of forgotten about. But part of our job here is to close cases, and we have been able to do that successfully over the last couple of years. So in summary, thank you to you all for your support, past and present. Appreciate the mayor and, and the manager's budget this year, and we'd ask you all to adopt that. And glad to answer any questions if I can.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Schaefer. Comment? Appreciate it.
Thank you. Save the best for last.
Now we got one more.
Thanks to the best. Good evening, everybody. I'm probate Judge Susan Schaefer. This is my staff attorney, Susan Huff. I just wanted to bring her, see if I can meet her as well. Really, I just wanted to let you know how thankful I am for you're giving me the time to speak this evening. And to just let you know, I'm really only going to take a couple of minutes of your time. In recognition of our great need at probate court, the mayor and his recommended budget included both funding for an associate judge position for the court and the remaining funds for our very much needed part-time contract staff attorney. And so I'm here tonight just to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. A heartfelt thank you. I'm not asking you for anything else. We need this desperately. These positions are vitally important in the service of our court and the running of the court. As y'all may know, we have, we help members of our community who are in crisis at very difficult times in their lives. They've lost a loved one, and we handle their deceased estates. They would deal with voluntary mental health crises. And when people need to be sent to be examined or evaluated or get longer-term mental health treatment. We address adult guardianships and conservatorships and minor guardianships and conservatorships. But in particular, you know, when your loved one or your friend becomes incapacitated and no longer can make decisions for themselves, and somebody has to be legally appointed to, to look out for their health and safety and welfare to address their finances. Dealing with their finances and the conservatorships and our deceased estates, sometimes there are fiduciary reporting requirements required. And so we have to review and audit those fiduciary filings and make sure that people who are placed in positions of trust over either estates, money, or more importantly, especially importantly, if our, our incapacitated adults, we want to make sure that they're not mishandling those funds and misappropriating them and using them in ways that aren't for the benefit of our, of our boards. We do a few other things. We, we process marriage license applications and weapons carry permit applications. We have a variety of other kind of cases, dog class, appeals, first, I swear in most of y'all. And, you know, we keep track of our oaths and bonds, as well as many other responsibilities that we handle at probate court and that we only can handle in probate court. Despite being extremely junior staff for many years, my amazing staff has worked just tirelessly to manage our statutorily required mandates. And for the last four-plus years that I've been with this, we have just worked really hard. Just like Judge Makin addressed, we've got our new case management system that is in phase two. It's not quite finished yet, but we have been utilizing it. It is helping tremendously. It's really helping us process our cases and keep track of different reporting requirements. And we're continuing on, on that system. And hopefully soon, we'll make it publicly searchable. And within the next couple of years, we expect the legislature is going to require mandatory filing for probate courts the way it works in superior court. We've also worked really hard in the last four-plus years to modify our procedures so that our cases are managed as efficiently and effectively as we can do that. Y'all know this. Our county population is increasing. Our members are aging, and they're living longer, which means that our cases are going up. And they're going to keep going up because addressing all of those needs that an older population requires. And so I just want to reiterate for y'all just how crucially important these positions are that are in the mayor's recommended budget to help us deal with our increasing population, to be even more efficient with the work that we do in our court, and to be able to handle things in a properly compliant and timely manner. And what we do, and with your help, it's just going to have a tremendous positive, long-term lasting effect on our community and on Athens Park County. So I just, again, I just want to thank you. I appreciate you. I just want you to know how important the positions are in this funding and how much I appreciate it. I'm not asking you for anything else. But I'm here to answer any questions that you have, if you have any. And y'all are always welcome to come to probate court. You're welcome to come and, and visit or, or ask questions anytime. And I promise you that we will make very good use of your support and help us to fulfill the trust and the needs of Athens Park County that have been entrusted on us. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Last but not least, it's time.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight. I will be asking you for some things, unlike the two people who preceded me. But I do want to start first with good news about where the district attorney's office is. We're facing some critical staffing shortages when I took office. We've hired nine assistant district attorneys. I have taken office. All those have begun working at the office at this point. We have an offer out to one additional assistant district attorney position. Hoping that candidate will accept, which would then bring us to 14 ADAs on staff with one open position that we had reallocated from what had previously been a legal assistant position. I'm also very excited about the leadership team that we brought on board from our office manager to the director of victim services to our chief assistant district. to director of victim services to our chief assistant district attorney and also being able to retain our chief investigator, Kelly Meredith. When I left the office, to come to meet with y'all here this evening, about 30 minutes ago, my office manager was still in the office preparing for us to onboard our summer interns. That brings me, next thing I'm really excited about is the ability that we've had to reestablish that relationship with the University of Georgia's law school to be getting prosecutorial interns from the law school place back in the office starting this fall. That's just based on the schedule that they have for how they manage their prosecutorial internship program, as well as a full class of undergraduate interns that will have come from the office, both to identify talent for future positions that we may have available and also to bring the office back to the role that it served in training prosecutors to go out throughout the state of Georgia by being a partner with the University of Georgia's law school. We've also returned a full-time assistant district attorney to dealing with our accountability court partners through the court process and also managing our pre-trial diversion program so that we can make sure that we're fully utilizing those programs to help especially nonviolent offenders be diverted into programs that are designed to help them address court issues leading to their interactions to criminal justice system and hopefully reduce recidivism for those types of offenses throughout our community. So I'm excited about a lot of those things. But we do have significant challenges in the office, both from, you know, our ability to have the number of positions that we have had previously. I'm sure that many of you, if not all of you, know that there were some significant grant funding that wasn't reapplied for last year that cost the office several different positions within the office. As you may see from our budget summary document of our budget, if you go back to FY24, the district attorney's office was authorized for 30 positions. In FY25, through the loss of the grant funding, that was cut down to 23 positions. The request that I've made is to return that to 29 positions, which wouldn't quite get us back to where we were in FY24, but would get us close. So it's incredibly important for a number of different reasons. One, we're facing a case backlog that's larger than what we faced coming out of COVID, including in Clark County alone, approximately 1,500 cases that are felony arrests that have not been charged and brought into the court system. To provide some context for that, I would estimate that's about three and a half times what you would expect a normal intake caseload to be. And it includes felonies that no one has taken a look at or done any work on in two to three years following the arrests. That's a significant challenge. It takes generally, the rule of thumb is that as a case older gets older, that accrues to the benefit of the defense in that case. Witnesses will move, their memories will fade, and the prosecution will become more challenging. As we tackle that, we also have kind of the double-edged sword of both an increase in the number of sworn officers at the Athens Clark County Police Department and the growth of the amount of digital evidence that we're receiving, whether it be through the real-time crime center, whether it be through body cameras, whether it be through that increased staffing, making it easier for the police department to deploy multiple officers to a single incident. All of those things are good things. But back when I was an assistant district attorney, before we had body cameras, we might have a few hours of audio recorded interviews and police reports for review. Now we have two hours of body camera footage from every officer who responded to the same. So the volume of evidence that we're processing on each case has increased as well. On top of that, we've had a situation where we have that refuse and total reduction in the total number of employees leads to the leadership staff in the office, whether it be the chief investigator, the chief assistant district attorney, or other people who should really be in training, support, mentoring, and administrative roles, having to step in and basically do the job of two people. An example of that is our chief investigator, rather than handling those duties you would typically consider to be handled by chief investigator, is actually doing all the full-time investigative work in juvenile court. And so that really leaves us without anyone. We have no special victims unit investigators at this point to focus the time and attention that we need to get those most serious cases ready for trial so we can advocate for victim, for justice for victims in those most serious cases, especially. Through my budget discussions with Oconomie County, I've received funding in the amount of $150,000 from its additional assistant district attorney. I appreciate the additional assistant district attorney position that's been part of the mayor's proposed budget to the commission. That would bring us to two of the three that I had originally requested. And I understand that there are significant budget constraints and there are a lot of important initiatives that need to be funded. I think we can get by without that third assistant district attorney that I've asked for in the short term. However, we really, really need help in the area of our investigator positions. I've asked for three. I think the total cost of that, I understand from budget documents, will be $80,000 per position, will be $240,000 total. Three would get us to a point where we could put an investigator back full-time in juvenile court. And then we could match our office structure with special victims units where we have two specific special victims unit investigators to match the two specific special victims unit victim advocates that we currently have. Those people devote their time to those cases that have a larger volume of evidence, have a larger amount of follow-up, and have a lot more direct contact and liaising that's needed between DA's office and those victims through the victim advocates. So that's my request for you. And then in addition to the one position that Clark County would be paying for, I think the structure that we've used previously is that the funds from Oconomie County would be used to essentially reimburse Clark County for the cost of that second assistant district attorney. It's a lot of work that we're looking at. It's really more work than the office has ever faced before. But I sit here before you honestly excited about the opportunity, excited about the team that we're building out and the direction that we're headed in, and appreciating the opportunity to sit here before you and answer any question. I'm happy to do so.
That's right.
Yeah, just great to have you here.
Thank you.
Sharing your details. I'm not sure if you can answer it now or if it's a follow-up email, but I'm curious about the, in the, in the statement of make up for the loss of eight grant-funded positions, the loss of, this grant cycle, is that something that you can explain to us and the opportunity for that to be helping with funding?
Yes, that's one of the first things we did when we got into office is trying to run that down. We looked into whether or not we could have a mid-cycle application. The way the grant funding works, I believe, is a three-year cycle. So after you apply during the open period, you reapply for continued funding each year. But if you didn't apply during the open period, you're not eligible to apply again until it comes open again. So the earliest that I can reapply for grant funding that was lost would be in the year 2026 to begin funding in 2027. We touched, you know, we didn't just ask one person. We got that answer from multiple places, including through the CJCC, which is the state agency that coordinates those criminal justice grants and distributing those to different prosecutor offices. So unfortunately, that's not something we're going to be able to fix in the short term. It absolutely 100% is something we will apply for again. And getting back, just to, you know, bragging on my people a little bit, our director of victim services, name is Ashley Duvall. She was working in that role in the O'Callaghan judicial circuit to our south. She's this former victim advocate in the DA's office here and started off at the front desk in the DA's office immediately after graduating college. She actually took time off, took her paid time off while she was still in the O'Callaghan judicial circuit and make sure that we did our voca grant reporting, the one grant that we did retain correctly even before she was working in the office. So we got some people who I'm excited about, and I know that she wants to make sure that we are able to supplement whatever funds that we're able to receive from the county and the state with grant funds to be good stewards of that money.
Grant answers. Exactly. Sort of thing I was looking forward to. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Could you just go over these numbers for the attorneys? I mean, that split on the attorneys and investigators.
Sure.
Right now with the mayor's budget, there's, and then the one from Oconomie County, you have money for next year for how many attorneys?
Seventeen attorneys.
Seventeen. And right now with the mayor's budget, you have enough for how many investigators?
With the mayor's budget, we have currently in the office, six investigators.
And so there aren't any other, right? There's nothing else there for that?
And that includes, I'm sorry, that includes what we receive through state funding also. So it's not just from Clark County. We do have one state-paid investigator.
And then maybe the other person is you. It says the full-time authorized positions in the mayor's budget are 24. So if it was six investigators, seven attorneys, and you, that would add up to 24.
It may be administrative support staff, I think. Case clerks is probably what's counted in there.
Well, it only, it only adds up to 24. And you said 17 attorneys. It says six investigators. So that gets to 23. So I'm just trying to.
So we have a mixed state and county funding.
Okay, okay.
So I have eight attorney positions that are paid through the state of Georgia, plus myself. My salary comes from the state of Georgia. So what we have on the county level is seven county-paid attorneys in Clark County. And so, yes, sir. And then we get, I'm sorry, our office manager is state-paid. We have two victim advocate positions that are state-paid, and we have one investigator's position that is state-paid.
And the three you were requesting would be county.
That would be three county investigators. That's correct.
And the one that you got from Oconomie, the attorney, is counting that number, the number that Commissioner Myers asked about. Is that separate?
No, no, no. Fifteen is, the 15 that I have right now does not count the additional position that the mayor's put in the proposed budget. It does not count the additional position that Oconomie County is funding. The 15 is what we have available to us right now. We've filled 13 of those positions with one offer out to a person currently as well.
That would bring you to 25 then, right? With the Oconomie County?
Yes, with the Oconomie County ADA, that would bring us to 25. And if we were to receive three investigators, that would bring us to 28. And that's still two positions under where we were in FY24.
That's the 240,000.
Yes, I think each of those investigator positions for budget calculations was at $80,000 a position. I'm basing that off of, in the budget highlights, it indicates $120,000 that's allocated for additional attorney position. And we had requested additional $480,000 in personnel. And so that would be 240 for the attorney positions we didn't receive. And then the three investigators would be the 80,000.
Any questions for my colleagues? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Since we're in order, do we take a break? Since we're point of order, do we take a break?
As.
We'll come back.
Yeah.
Back up in London. Thank you, sir. So we'll go ahead and um. I got some housekeeping items I want to talk about quickly. This is the thing y'all want to discuss, but um. Um, we'll go from there. First of all, I want to thank the staff that are here tonight. Um, after our last budget meeting, I met with um manager um Griffin and my chief of staff, um Sarah. We thought it would be good to have an expert at the table when we have questions that can get answered. Except for being here tonight to answer those questions maybe um and may need to be answered. Secondly, um Sarah passed out a document. Thank you, Sarah, very much for doing this. All the questions that we asked in our last budget meeting is in this document. She also sends an email or a folder. You can go into your email, go to that folder, any questions that you want to add, it tells you how to do it. Anything you want to add, any questions you want to ask, you can go into that. Staff will review it and hopefully in our next budget cycle, we have that answer for you. Respectfully. Next week, um we council for Thursday, so we're not meeting this Thursday. But on the twenty second will be another budget hearing. I will not be present. Governor Commissioner Thornton has agreed to um run that particular budget cycle. So she'll be here on Thursday. For that. So with that said, any discussion about anything with the Constitution office brought to the table? Or anything we talked about in the past, Commissioner?
I really want to thank you. We've never had a follow-up like this with our questions. I don't know who did it.
It's staff and it's staff throughout the government, but primarily our budget and finance.
Thank y'all.
This was very really clear, very helpful in our decision-making. I still would like to note um again about our our uh attorney painters and how much we're paying. I still now that might be somewhere.
It's okay.
It's fine.
It is.
Okay.
It is.
That's fine.
He made a copy of you all, but he didn't send us something.
Yeah, he did, and he sent it and and given that it was coming from your attorney, we sent it separate.
Oh, okay.
Now, it was it was a very detailed memo with a lot of information in it. I am not sure whether or not he he gave the dollar amounts with it. And if he didn't, we will get that for you. But and that if he didn't, that's my fault because I told him I needed help with him providing information on the outside counsel work. And so he just went ahead and did it all and sent it to you.
I briefly looked at it. I don't remember seeing it.
I don't, I don't.
But um, but he did.
Okay. And and my and my other question is, and and may well, staff can definitely help me with this. So every time we have a major project, infrastructure, anything to build or whatever, do we always use outside contractors?
Generally, yes, if it's a major project. We do have some in-house crews that do things like smaller paving projects, sidewalk projects, uh setting meter taps, um finer renovations, like you might see in in the department. But um, once you get over kind of that general rule of thumb would be a million-dollar threshold, we're going to be outsourced.
So when we, when you do that, do do you guys let us know that you want to do it out like? And I guess I'm thinking more now about North Avenue Carpet. Um, uh, the work that was done, I think we, I think um they talked about. Was that staff or was that an outside?
Uh, we had AECom engaged.
AECom, that was the name.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the Splast project or the Ray's grant?
Ray's grant, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so AECom was on board for that.
Yeah, that was a, that was a, an outside engineering consultant that that did that analysis and worked on the the specifics of the design work and things like that.
So how, how and and so for for those outside consultants, how do, is that already budgeted in each of the departments if they have to have to call our consultant? Because now I understand it now. I I didn't before. I used to fuss about consultants. I did not know under certain thresholds, we automatically use outside consultants.
In the case of of the Ray's grant, that money was being charged towards the the grant amount that we talked about earlier today. That's that's the money that we told you earlier that if we don't get it across the finish line, we're going to have to pay it at the local level for that that engineering and design work.
And and specifically on that one, there was a commission item under June sixth, twenty twenty-three to engage AECom in that and those services.
So 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 when you do engage, and and I'll be paying more attention now. Uh, so when we do engage consultants for a big project that does come through us or?
Generally, unless perhaps we're using one of our own call consultants or engineering firms, and then that might not. But I think generally any of the bigger projects come through you guys.
Yeah, under two hundred thousand, um manager has the authority to approve. Um, if other procurement's been that.
But there's not many of them that are under that anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner Dan.
It's so you talked about emails and our document. Did we get that today?
Um, she did, my bad.
Okay.
She sent it to me.
I'm not.
Sarah, would you send the rest of the commissioners?
Yes, I will. In fact, I'm typing it right now.
Sorry, this is so. Okay, she sent it to me first. Thank you, Sarah. Yes, sir, Commissioner Coe.
So this could be any question. Okay, um. Thank y'all for what you gave us. This is very helpful, um answered questions. So talking about the courthouse, we allocated four point five million dollars in January of twenty twenty-five. What are those? That stuff is underway, is that correct?
Uh, a good bit of it, yes. So uh process-wise, step one is to get the elevators working and get the other scheduled capital items up, like the roof. And so um the courthouse users have not yet been engaged around security upgrades and space modifications. Certainly, security upgrade should be informed by the sheriff's office. What I'm getting a sense of from talking with those various users and even what you've heard tonight with the sheriff saying, you know, the desired camera system being one and a half to two million dollars is that ultimately that user group probably needs to revisit what's been approved and come back if there's a a deeper ask. Another example would be um the courthouse users really commonly ask for flooring and carpet. We have intentionally not put carpet in it because we were intending that by this point, the building should be gutted. To this point, those Splas funds have been set aside for that. But as we look at the reality of the building, it might be time to put a little flooring and carpet in it.
So I'm gonna um not putting this in the question to you, but I did, I think I did. How much money we had raised for the um new judicial center, how much money we got in that particular Splas project? And seeing well that, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take us to do these, but I think the commission whole purpose for one of that thing to the rest of them. Now I want to reach my colleagues. I really think with other funds that we have collected, uh, I think we really need to go in and just do a serious upgrade that could happen with spaces, with space, you know, security cameras. But again, I don't know based on how the Splas was written, but that we can use those funds to get out. We'll put that in a question. We all can uh answer that, but I would like to know if that's the case, then of course the mayor has to bring it forward and put it on the agenda that we whatever funding we got or funds we got, that we take care of that courthouse. But that I'll put it in the question.
And we've got four point five allocated it allocated to it right now.
Yeah, correct.
And but we we're going to need above that to bring it up to what's.
Yeah. So. And there won't really be estimates on that until we go through the process of establishing what that vision is and what those improvements are.
And and just as a kind of reminder, there was uh just about seventy-seven million dollars in that bucket.
Get for the courthouse?
Well, that's the space modernization. Some space activity broadly.
And um it's county-wide, man. Is that county-wide, man?
Uh, yeah, but with with a focus on kind of the judicial facility and municipal center.
If I might, I do want to let you all, we'll put this in the answer in your document. We're aware of additional asks that have been made from the courthouse users that are probably not likely to be Splas eligible. So anything that you can put into Splas, my recommendation to you ours is put it into Splas because capital funds are scarce. But two examples is uh they've asked for window cleaning and exterior pressure washing. The preliminary bids on doing that on a what accounts to be about a six-story building, uh four sides and deck is about a quarter million dollars. So if that's something that y'all would like to do, you'll need to set aside kind of one-time funds for those purposes. And what you may want to do as a body is just have kind of a small bucket of an operating supplement that says this is for, you know, kind of service level improvements and things that are not capital, but as determined by the courthouse users in consultation with facilities management.
So to your point, you know, with me being a facilities guy, probably maybe that budget, that budget or that lot item should be essential services.
Yeah.
Where it can be, should be essential service. We all can do that type of those type of things because I always have a budget. And you change it to window washing, pressure washing, the can't, can't do my budget. So maybe as a as a commission, we take a look at that and maybe transfer those funds to central services to make that happen.
We have to create a, create that first or is it already created?
I don't know. I'm going to say we have to take a look and see. But but because right now, um Andrew, do we have funding to do stuff like that in central services?
And there we go. And even another common request we get is uh air duct cleaning.
Yeah.
We've never, to my knowledge, been resourced for air duct cleaning. So for a building like this, we did it a few years ago. It was really with small surplus. But if we were being good facility stewards, we would have a budget for systematic air duct cleaning just like I have for exterior cleaning.
So again, I think I, I know y'all didn't request it in the future, but and moving forward, stuff like that, you probably have all the central services budget. It's going that way. I don't know who.
I just I'd make a comment about that. So looking at central services um budget on C twenty, um it looks like they were receiving Hotel Motel uh funding in twenty-four, have not received anything since then. Um, if you go to uh E eight, um, there is a prior year fund balance, two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. Could we, since we've used uh Hotel Motel tax for central services before, could that money be put there? And use it for pressure washing, duct, like use it for maintenance and upkeep? Because there is a um division of uh central services called facilities management.
Correct.
But I'm assuming that's maintenance, right?
I think we'd want some time to look into that because Hotel Motel has some strings attached and we could certainly capture that.
It does, but so we have done that before though, right? Am I reading that right?
Oh, I think what you're referencing is at one point and still now, we funded a downtown beautification crew out of Hotel Motel, and it was at one point a singular line item. And then to streamline the accounting and the payroll, what happens now is that's funded in the central services budget. And then there is a transfer from Hotel Motel to the general fund. It's kind of a one-time deal each budget season to account for that. So instead of drawing off a two funds, you just have the one fund, hit your main fund and off you go. Um, but yes, there is still enhanced landscape services downtown as a result of Hotel Motel investments.
And what does that cover, Andrew? Like the plantings, pressure washing, the sidewall, cleaning, any, like what's included?
So the, a lot of it was driven by Clayton Street having those planters. So it's a beautification plantings, uh some resources for more frequent maintenance of the downtown properties like City Hall and um this facility. And then tree maintenance is another big driver downtown. Um, so what it really dedicated was a staff member added to a crew so that they would have the labor available to increase the level of service.
So it, I mean, do we get the the city ball pressure washed? Is this clean?
It got cleaned the. Fairly recently.
Yeah, the trees, somebody cut down the trees.
Yeah.
Andrew, what ever happened to the um the inmate paint?
It's operational, so that was funded in last year's budget and it is being used to supplement indoor painting, which decreases those live buildings in the cycle program.
So it's functional, so it, I I didn't know where to look for it. So it is in this year's budget for um to maintain.
Yes.
I'll find it.
One more question. I I hate to keep harping on this, but back on E eight, if you're looking at Hotel Motel, it's got under total expenditures, capital, central services, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. And it shows we've done that last year also. But if you look on this, it doesn't show anything, any funding coming to central services from Hotel Motel.
Sure, so that capital lands on a variety of accounts. One is called the enhancement program. It was envisioned to be kind of an ADDA-directed account for planters and minor upgrades downtown. Interestingly, it's only in recent history been used to upgrade parking decks, and it's actually going to be brought back to you soon for that purpose. Uh, also is used for the uh money that's for Christmas lighting or holiday lighting downtown. So that lands in the kind of a capital account and it comes out. Um, so that money that you're seeing in EA is actually largely accounts, uh and at times similarly, that would be those two. Uh, at at times there's also parking money that comes in separate, but um it's basically landing in capital, so it's carrying forward, but not being used for operating, regular operating activities.
I have a question. Sarah, um would you please, um, since the inmate paint crew is still functional, could you send some information?
Yes, ma'am. Ending.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a couple of questions if I remember them, but the fire, looking at this with the firefighters, uh union, collective bargaining, it seems that they're asking for fifty thousand for the collective bargain agreement or where you guys got to. Um, and but that covers twenty-five thousand for mattress replacement and fifteen thousand for additional computers. So you know, like everything else, do we have a capital replacement, you know, schedule for mattresses and firehouses? And how does this like work into that request? Because they obviously, I mean, we do replace mattresses occasionally. And and likewise with computers, this is additional computers. Um, so if there's any more explanation of that and how that fits in, what we would be doing anyway.
Yes, so we do have a, and I'll let Vicky speak to this as well, but we do have a mattress replacement uh account. We actually have a capital project, Kirk. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the union wanted to hasten the pace at which we were replacing those mattresses. So they are requesting this additional funding so that we can go ahead and replace all of the rest of the mattresses this year. Um, Vicky, is there anything else you would add to that?
No, that's exactly what happened. It was just a bargaining item.
Is it, I mean, I'm just, I I hate, this sounds really micromanaging, but I mean, what was the replacement? I mean, we'll have, it's a specific request here.
It is, and the union just really wanted, I I think it was kind of low-hanging fruit for the thing here, that that if they could get all the mattresses replaced. Apparently, when you buy a mattress, there's a uh life expectancy of the mattress.
Right.
And some of them exceeded that or or many of them did. So rather than do a replacement cycle, they just wanted to replace them all. They wanted them all replaced.
And and the computers is the same thing that.
It is additional. They wanted actual, not laptops, but actual PCs so that there would be a space, a desk, a computer for their members to sit.
And is that like one per firehouse?
I don't remember that it was one per firehouse. I can look into that and and get back to you, but that it was mostly for training purposes. So that was the reason.
Right, right, that makes sense. That does make sense of that. Um, the the other thing I just, I I was just um, yeah, wondering for my colleagues, you know, the sheriff had a very compassionate plea there, and I've just been keeping track of some of these requests. Uh, at this point, with all the requests that we've heard, it like, I, you know, what I have here is very rough. It's up to seven point six, six million dollars, right? So I just was wanting, the sheriff was a large one. I just was wondering if any of my colleagues could uh, you know, comment on that, all of it, thoughts on that? Because that's going to be a a big ask coming down the road here.
Well, I think the biggest, I took sheriff twice.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, colleagues, commissioners, court, and he might have talked to another commissioner. They haven't spoken twice. I think the the big, one of the biggest asks, he wants some other stuff. I think the courthouse is separate, but just for, I think his biggest ask is bringing the deputies up to the same pay as incoming ACCPD. I think that's, that's one of his biggest asks.
And that was six, six in a six.
Yeah. Sixteen or something. But what did we put aside last year, though? John, we put some money outside, I thought, last year to to um take care of that request, and we, but we held off on it.
I'm still unclear. So he's budgeted for forty positions less than what he's got. So that money is there, is that correct or it's not?
My, my.
Because he said he's got forty open.
Forty, yes.
But it's, it's one ninety-five, let's say.
But I, I hope we were doing this the same. I mean, my understanding of how we were working this was if there were positions, it was based on some percentage over of the, I mean, general. I don't know if that's Sarah.
Um, so I will allow my technical staff to correct me, but my understanding is so we have for the last about five years budgeted for filled positions. And so those vacancies are chronic vacancies that the sheriff's office has has experienced. And so therefore, that's what he's referring to. And he says, you know, we no longer have salary savings because we are budgeting for filled positions. And he's chronically had that many vacant. He is not seeing that year-time vacancy rate provide that salary savings. And did I get that wrong, anybody? Okay.
That money's there, he's spending it. It's just like an overtime and other things because he's.
Not for those forty positions that are chronically vacant.
No, it's, it used to be there.
Right.
Years ago, and it was the same way with me when I was in planning, that, you know, if you had salary savings from vacancies, you had additional money to go hire an intern or to do things. Four years ago, Tim, or?
The, we started with a more vague vacancy rate. It was probably about five or six years ago, and the last two, three years, it's been filled positions on. Try to true up the salary, the budget to like an actual salary.
So we weren't ended up with significant salary savings at the end of the year by departments if you had a lot of vacancies, which changed everything.
And I don't want to go out of the red hole, but when that, when we first got elected, I brought that up. I said, Sarah's savings would really help departments. Maybe in the future, as we get to this budget, that's a budget cycle, may have something that we may want to foster for. Give and give our departments some flexibility to those there. Again, that could be, that that can impact our budget. I'm just talking out loud, and I don't want, not something we need to deal with now, that we move forward. Maybe take a look at that and see that look like moving forward.
I I will say that the reason that we started doing that, that was, actually, I'm the perpetrator of that, is because every year we would budget it a hundred percent of filled positions, and we never had any money to give pay raises. I mean, we went ten, twelve years, we didn't give hardly any pay raises. And so the, when we got to the point where we had twenty percent vacant positions, twenty-five percent vacant positions, I'm like, look, guys, we we budget for all these positions that we know are not going to be filled. And then we end the year with this huge surplus, and it just sits there. But we're not giving our employees pay raises, and yet our vacancy rate keeps going up. So the only way we can afford from a budget perspective to give pay raises is to budget those positions that are filled plus any, you know, that you think might be filled during the year. And that was really, that was what, twenty-three? It was the first year where we were actually able to give real raises. I mean, before that, I mean, I've done some work on looking at it. I mean, before that, I mean, I've done some work on looking at it. We, we just, we weren't keeping up with inflation. Even back when inflation wasn't really an issue, we weren't keeping up with it then. And so we went to this methodology, and we put some money aside because we have another account where we do put some extra money aside in case, like when the police department started filling their vacant positions, we had money to move into their budget to, to fill that. If you've got 200, 250 vacant positions, and you budget for all of them, you've got money for nothing else.
Oh, I love to have a conversation with you after a budget. We did some of the things similar at UGA with Sarah. So again, I don't, it's not, it's not the time. The future.
Okay.
So is there a chance that there's $600,000 there for raises? If you said that y'all, we were putting money aside in different departments, would there be that much for, in the sheriff's department fund?
Well, the money is not there because it wasn't budgeted. But another, 40 vacant positions that we didn't, we didn't budget for that.
But he could theoretically hire, like tomorrow, if somewhere came down, he could, he has those positions. I mean, we'd be there.
If he hired for a few of those positions, there is another account that's sitting out there that budget goes in, and they reallocate those funds. He couldn't fill all 40 of them because that would eat off them.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's not enough money there for that.
And we experienced this a little bit with PD. So when hiring incentive and wages caught the attention of the workforce, and we started to restaff on our sworn officers, not only do you have that higher overall staffing cost, but you also have to account for putting those wages back for positions that have been previously authorized. So it's a bit of a one-two punch, but certainly departments that have had those vacancies shouldn't be penalized for then being able to get back to service.
So back to my original question here on the chip, on the, on the, you were starting, I mean, this all started from my original question, out of all this 30, almost 36, I don't know, 36 in, you know, that the sheriff is talking about. I want my colleagues to know on that.
And we should just ask, because the homeless population is only going to get worse. People are going to continue to overdose, and it could be at a higher rate when school is out. We do want the jail to be fully funded, because if something happens in the jail, it's this body that's going to get lawsuits. And so I think, I think really, if this is just my opinion, I think when you go to jail, y'all, I don't know if y'all have been in jail, but I spent like two nights in jail, and it wasn't fun. And it was, you know, it's not a hotel, but those conditions, and that was when Ira was sheriff, not Jim. Anywho, it's just, when we, when residents of Athens Clark County go to jail, whether it be because of break, breaking the law, or not having adequate bed to sleep in because of mental health, and you can't go into the shelters, we do, and I know people are probably going to say, well, Timmy, you don't want to go to jail either. I don't want them on the streets either. I, I feel like if you have a jail, residents are going to go to that jail, they're going to require care in that jail. And so we should fool it to the fullest extent as possible. And just a question, could those 40 positions be chronically vacant because the starting rate is so low? Or no?
Well, that wasn't sheriff ever related to me. It feels like, oh, well, for example, just again, say you're coming out to academy, going through all the training. ACCPD has an opening. It feels like that because they pay more, recruitment is probably going to go.
What does the number say? Does the number say that? Or did we?
I don't know. I don't know the data on that. But again, I think that is sort of the conversation we have had.
Well, you know, I guess, I guess you can imagine though, the police department was down, and had a bunch of vacancies. And when salaries did change, they're fully stacked. So that, I guess that's where the sheriff is getting his assumptions.
Yeah.
I want to add some different question about the firefighters. And I know you were not here when we went through all of that negotiation. And I'm all for mattresses. I am not going to fall out about no mattresses. One of the things that some of us voted for this union was that, that they were going to be connected to the National Fire, Fire Union Association, and there were going to be benefits and things that would be supportive of them unionizing here. Have, have you seen any of that? I mean, is there any back and forth of what they can bring to the table also?
When you say benefits, what type of benefits would you see?
For equipment.
Equipment, training.
Buying power, or buying stuff like that. Isn't that right?
Yeah, they bring that up. Bringing that up. And I did bring up some training funds, whether that, you know, and, and now they, that is not something that we talked about.
Building on that, did any, did they talk about, you know, this, the EMT and the medical training? Was there any discussion of like, you know, salary bonuses, boosts, whatever steps, if you had higher levels of medical, if you went up to the, get the terms, I should know that by heart by now, but the different levels of EMT, up to the aromatic, was there any discussion of that? That wasn't brought up? Thank you.
That's meant to, I'm going to say it out loud again, our biggest holes in the budget and our biggest asks are coming from the public safety and judicial sectors. And that's where we could talk to UGA about public safety fee. Doing the math, if they were to charge each student $100 a year, that would net over $4 million. If they charged ticket holders $10 a ticket, that would net $6 million. Our community, our taxpayers pay a lot of money towards keeping people safe around university functions. And that transient population has an impact on our bottom line, you know, and I'll say that we get it back in sales taxes, but I don't know if anybody's ever done the cost benefit analysis. It's common in other communities to have those kind of agreements. We'd have to work through the board of regents, but I feel like it's something that we need to seriously bring up. We get the emails from parents and administrators about public safety in our community, and then we, and save, well, maybe it's time we get a little contribution towards that.
And perhaps when we get a new manager in who will definitely want to have a, build a relationship with UGA, that could be something that could be talked about in a direct way.
Yeah.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
I just want, since Brad insisted I be here tonight, I'm the unfiltered. You know, if you go back to last September, Nikki had asked me to give a financial presentation.
All right, I remember that.
Okay. If you look at our budget, we give a lot of, or we place a lot of money, other buckets out of the general fund. So for instance, we've got, we've got six TADS, all right? And, and there's a lot of development going on in some of those TADS, and any increment in that goes straight into those TADS. That's money that we can't use for general fund purposes. Clean energy fund that was established four or five years ago, at the time, it didn't cost us any money because franchise fees had been static for so long. Now it's costing us one and a half million a year that we have to transfer from the general fund to that special revenue fund. And it's only going to go up because as electricity costs go up, then of course, the franchise fee is assessed on that rate. If those people pay more for electricity, then that rate goes up, and it works just like a TAD where you've got a baseline, and then anything in excess of that goes to that fund. So you're looking at one and a half million maybe this year. I'm probably off a little bit, but it's projected to go up. I think budget did an analysis, and it's going to be well over $2 million a year in a few years. That money goes out. We give a lot of money to, we used to call them independent agencies, now the community.
CPP.
CPP. We give a lot of money to quasi judicial, or quasi governmental. We also give a lot of money, like, last year, the decision was made to fund certain capital projects on a one-time basis, you know, because they weren't in SPOSS, they weren't in TSPLOSS or anything like that. And nobody wanted to finance them at that time. We, we put money, we put, we're putting $4 million this year into the affordable housing fund that's coming straight out of the general fund. In years past, the capital money that we were taking from the general fund and putting into the, was it 310 fund? That's for the general fund capital for stuff that's not covered by SPOSS, TSPLOSS. That's why I've been harping on TSPLOSS and SPOSS for years. We're having, you know, that was the previous manager's big thing was capital. I don't know why, but it was, and he saw the need for that. So we were doing anywhere up to 12, 13 million dollars a year into that. All that money's being siphoned. If you add all that up, it's millions and millions of dollars being spent on things that are, they're your priorities. They're not mine. They're your priorities. I mean, I'm not voting for it. I mean, I'm not on the, I'm not elected, so that's why I'm not voting on it. But they're your priorities. But you got to look at that, that's a lot of money. So really, in absence of getting UGA to kick in more money or something like that, really, your, your only choice is a higher military. Get right down to it. So you, you know, you've got all these, this vast resources to pay for stuff. We've just got to utilize that for, if you, the sheriff's office is the big thing now, and some other items, then you might want to revisit some of these others.
The only other option, the other option is, and this happened at Clark Central, when our urban three presented, is our spending. And we really could capture a lot of that money, but everything that you mentioned, that's expenditure. It's not coming back to us. Taxpayers are paying for things that they really are not benefiting from. Now, when you pay for the jail, all of us benefit. We got a criminal off the street that may go upside your head. So we all benefit. So I don't think a mileage increase is, is the only answer. I think our spending needs to get checked. And we cannot put money where it doesn't bring money back into the government. And I've said that, but, you know, we're just such good-hearted people. And, but let's just say, it's not just the military. I wish, I'm not going to ask nobody about raising no military when, when, when I know that some of this is spending, and you gave examples of some of this stuff.
I think the question has been asked, and we don't know if some of those agencies got to our general budget. That's how, again, very down the road, you know, discussion. But I think as we move forward, and we know what's going to happen on the federal level, we got to start taking a hard look, refund those nonprofits as a part of our general budget. And they do great work, but we got to make sure that we take care of the basic needs of this community, roads, capital projects.
And safety.
Safety, those types are critical. So we, we got to, you know, they may get, I don't know that we're done yet, but no agency get a pass this year. But I think we got, among our scale, we got to take a hard, take a hard look. How does that benefit us, agents that we're funding from our general?
I just want to say that some of those agencies are doing, I mean, if we look at people who end up on the street, who end up homeless, who end up having mental health crises. So a lot of those agencies are helping at the other end. I am also going to speak up right away because I see a tax coming on here for the clean energy fund. And I understand what you guys are talking about, but I want to also make sure we look at what our operating expenses are. One of the things, you know, you're talking about energy costs going up. Well, they're going up. We can't create, we can't, can't stop that from happening if it's Georgia power, but we can change how much energy we're using and how much of that energy we're doing. So there's a cost benefit ratio there that I think has to be looked at. And if you, we want to come back, if we want to come back and vote again in this community to get rid of our, our commitment to clean energy overall, we can do that. But I want to make it happen. It's not going to just go under the table for being ignored. So I'm bringing that one up as something that's going to be right there, because that was like a key reason why I'm here in the office. So it won't go quietly. Well, I'll do that.
Well, just a reminder for you all, a lot of the nonprofit, almost all of the nonprofit funding goes through the CPP program. You all have already approved contract awards to the tune of a million dollars that are obligations in FY26.
They get a pass. I say, I think moving forward though, again, we don't know what's going to happen from a revenue.
We don't know what's going to happen with, who's in the white house next. So, I mean, we need to just be honest about that. And, and it bothers me, it really does bother me that we're not reading the tea leaves. We knew the ARPA money was going to run out, and we, we drug it long. Folks should have been prepared for that, you know. So I just think that we've done the best we could, and, but I don't think we were prepared for energy stuff. I don't think we were prepared for ARPA money, disappear. We, you know, we, we built, I don't know, I can't remember, how much did we spend on the toilet downtown?
$110,000.
Okay, we spent, because we had it, the money was flowing. But we did not predict that someday, something was going to cave in. And that's our fault. And I say our fault. I mean, it's just that we just didn't have that vision like that. We've got to prepare now for tomorrow.
Let, let's just, I know we're taking the fear out of term here, but what's the amount of money that we're not getting because of the new homestead, you know? Just, just a reminder of that.
That's really- That's right.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, you know, that's, that's adding on to this.
All right. So is there somewhere in this book that outlines all these funds, the stuff is going to, like a breakdown of it? Or is that something that we could get?
It's all in. I think it's that. We need to find heads and-
It's not all in one place.
Right, right, right.
It's all in, yeah. The quad governmental is in, and F, other.
I don't know, what the question?
Partnership program is part of CD.
Is there a way to get them condensed in one lesson? Is it too hard?
But we don't know what you're at.
But it's to what David was talking about. We can list everything David said, but it's that. Well, money that is, that we are putting in different buckets that we're not, that we cannot use in the general fund. That's what you're saying. We're putting too much stuff in other buckets, correct?
I'm not saying you're putting too much. I'm just-
Putting a lot.
Putting it there.
Yes. So I'd love to see what we're putting.
See, Judge. Saying that's where it's going.
I'd like to see what, that amount and line what each one of those are. I'd like to see what that amount and line, what each one of those are. Because I'm like a Vita, I'm not about to raise taxes to fund, to pay for things that are our special interest that are not providing the services now. But I think we need to relook at those types of things, still, we can save money and get the police, get the courts and the sheriffs and the courthouse, things like that that need to be done. We can do it, but you'd have to allow us to call it David's bucket. Perfect.
David?
This says David, not my last name.
It's about, it's eight forty-five, guys. I don't want to stop anybody, come along with me.
Yes.
I'll take one more question, go ahead, Carol.
No, I'm just saying the TAD, the, the, the tax allocation districts are back here as well. I just don't want to, I mean, I'm just like, we got to remember this discussion when the T-SPOSS projects come in front of us. Because it's going to be, you know, talk about special interest. You know, we, we set aside last fall, we said, you know, I don't, I can't remember what the voter, it wasn't unanimous, but it was maj- vast majority, um, that we were going to put money towards projects, money that we needed for, to run the government like this. That's going to be really easy. And that's going to be, you know, what is T-SPOSS? That's a, a bunch of million dollars. What is it, a two hundred billion over the five years? Who's seeing experts here? Something like that, it's something like that in that way. So which is, is equal to many mil, like over five years. That, that's a lot of money. If we're talking about fifty million dollars or forty or fifty million dollars a year when we're talking about these numbers here. So I just, I just want to urge us to remember that when we get to that.
I agree with you, but that's a long-term thing. We've got short-term problems with the sheriff's department, things like that.
Oh, no, 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 that's true.
That we've got to.
But we're going to be making the short-term decision on what's on that T-SPOSS in two months, three months. So.
One more question.
All right, um, about T-SPOSS. It's too slow. It's just too slow as far as, um, getting projects done. And Brad was so kind to answer most of my questions. You're going to tell me you've already sent it to me. But I would like to know the process. Oh, you have good.
Got it, but I have not seen.
I want to see the process because, uh, because when you have to go through a user group, and I heard it again about to different project, that is what has, one of the things that has been holding um, my district up with T-SPOSS. And I think that if we can cut through some of the bureaucracy, maybe we could get projects done and people will see what we're doing. And then they won't mind if you had to raise the military. But they're not seeing anything. Or they're seeing piecemeals. So I do think that we need to look at the process of T-SPOSS. Maybe we got too many user groups, I don't know. But I do think that some of this responsibility has to come back to the commissioners and not us just depending on a user group. Because the projects are too slow, they're, they get stuck somewhere. And then you say, oh, well, you didn't do this and you didn't do that. Folks are not interested in why we're not doing it. They want us to get the work done. And maybe we need to look at the bureaucracy on T-SPOSS and SPOSS project.
Well, and, and when we bring you the list, what I would like to do with that is, I mean, at the end of the day, it is you all's decision on how you want to run this, this process. And it has evolved over time with the SPOSS that we've had. But I think it would be beneficial to be, which one of these steps from top to bottom are required, that, that we are required to do? And which ones are these steps, steps that we implemented for additional opportunities? A lot of that is for you all to see it and have pocket points. If you're checking in more times than you're required to, and then you're complaining that the administration and the other piece from, who's running the program are high. Because they got to keep bringing these things back through cycles that they may not have to. That's a decision you all would make. And I'm not going to try to talk you in one way or the other. But, but I think that, that we probably do it very different than many other communities around the state in terms of the way they run their programs.
And I, I would caution eliminating that public input on the front end of user groups. Would you end up in a situation like North Avenue? Get a reaction to, and where you have that public input process through the initial phases. Play together, actually, to kill a project or drag it out.
There was, there was, um, input and, and, and it's very isolated. It was input, there was two sessions of community input. But it was not publicized like it should have been. And, um, folks felt left, left out because it was a traditional, um, process where you go around and look, folk want to have input, not to put and say, oh, well, it looks like you already have something planned. So it's just the way you do it. So I'm not, I'm not, um, I'm the first one to want public input first. But it's just how you do it and when you do it and who, and who knows and are included.
So with that said, um, because we're still on the budget, I'll just look to the mayor. Maybe that's something that we need to have as a work session as we get through this budget, because there's a lot of conversation. I don't think we're going to maybe do that in this budget cycle. I heard, if we move forward, so we have a work session on mayor or, or in a retreat, talk about how we, how that T-SPOSS, our, and SPOSS project, because I have my own, how SPOSS project should go. And, um, it was very successful, but because of, with government, not school district, maybe some angst in there that we can't do, but it'd be a question I can ask as we move forward. But I think that is, better process, the more efficient process that we can do SPOSS projects.
We, we have a much more complex version of project rollout here than most, even counties do. And, uh, and, and we do need to have a deep conversation about that in this late summer, early autumn. You can get managers on.
So with this said. Let my colleagues go.
Thank you.